Right. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Wareboard Selectmen.
We're not done yet.
I don't know.
Well, it's just not here yet. It's not even gonna connect. It's still streaming, just.
Okay, all set? For now?
Well, I'll do my best. I'm gonna try to go back out and in.
Says it just went live.
Says streaming still. It says stream and it's not even starting. Okay.
It's got the notification.
It may have gone. It may have gone. Just, it's probably not gonna be showing. Did, is it on? Can you hear?
Yeah, it's on.
All right, well, I don't know why it's still spinning, so.
That's all right. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Wareboard Selectmen for December twenty-seventh. A little bit of an off night. We're all a little bit off on our dates, that's for sure. We all keep thinking today's Monday. Um, we started with a couple of non-publics, brings us to almost seven o'clock for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm gonna open a public hearing to hear public testimony and comment on the acceptance of an unanticipated revenue in the amount of ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents from the state of New Hampshire, a one-time bridge payment in accordance with House Bill Two. You or Jason?
Doesn't matter. You want to or me to?
You want to chat about it?
Okay. So, you guys did, um, last week, you, I think it was last week, you did the highway part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they came in two separate checks, two separate times. Too bad we couldn't do it together. So, this is the unanticipated revenue of ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents for a one-time bridge payment in accordance with House Bill Two, which is fifty percent of the distribution is based on where's percentage of statewide municipal bridge deck surface area, and the remaining fifty percent is based on the where's percentage of statewide population. This is a one-time payment that's used on maintenance, construction, or reconstruction of municipally-owned bridge, and they're non-lapsing funds.
And the intention is to end up, our intention is to put it in the bridge fund? That we have.
Whatever you wanna do.
I believe that would be the intention is for us to put it in the bridge fund.
Makes sense.
Sounds like that's the optimal place for it to open.
I would think so. Floor is open for comment.
Frank Campana, you raised a question for me. Maybe when you make the motion, can you say specifically that it'll go into the bridge fund? Okay, so it doesn't open it up for anything else? Or allow it to be used for it?
Understood. Anyone else? Okay. Close public hearing? Now, how, I guess, how do we form that motion? Because it's twenty twenty-three, unanticipated. I guess, can we put an intent on it? Come on.
I believe you.
I appreciate your confidence.
I'm thinking that's kinda how we'd have to, just to, I guess, maybe to say, to be with the intention of transferring into the bridge reconstruction fund in twenty twenty-four? Because then, in twenty twenty-four, we can actually allocate the funds, correct?
I don't think we've done a, um, in another conversation. I don't think you've finished, um. We have up through the tenth of January to finalize our numbers, so I'm not sure if she can or can't include it. The intent would be to do it in twenty-three, because that's why we pushed to have a public hearing in twenty-three.
But doesn't it go in the general fund in twenty-three as an unanticipated? Even though it's earmarked?
It does, but again, you can, um. I think you can move it, but again, I don't, I don't really know. I mean, the intent is there. Just like the intent was to receive it for the highway use.
I'll take a swing at it. I'll move that we accept the unanticipated revenue in the amount of ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents from the state of New Hampshire as a one-time bridge payment in accordance with House Bill Two with the intent to be deposited into the bridge reconstruction fund.
Second.
Is that what it's called? Bridge construction? Is it bridge construction maintenance? Or is there a specific title to it?
I think, isn't it Bridge? I think it's Bridge Reconstruction. Bridge Maintenance and Reconstruction Fund.
I'll second that.
Too slow.
Too slow. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Aye?
Yeah, aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, um. Go for a bridge update with Jason. I'll get to you in a few minutes.
So, I guess, two weeks ago, maybe more, we left off with an eight-thousand-dollar number. Hoping to get some reassurances on whether or not we could get our posting lifted. Uh, so I talked to Tom Marshall Jacobs. Tried to work on that number. We came up with a different proposal. Uh, we tried working with DOT, got some of their calculations that they did, so he can go ahead and take those and put his numbers in and make it a little easier on him to take some of that cost down. It's his opinion as well as mine that it's gonna come down to, um, the floor beams and the south side end base stringers, and just so happens that DOT doesn't have the calculations for those end base stringers. So, that's something that he's gonna have to
Come up with.
Come up with. So, he asked for somewhere around fourteen, fifteen thousand, to really get a yes or a no if we should move forward or if we shouldn't. And at any point in that process, if it looks like a no before we get all done.
You pull the plug.
Pull the plug on it.
Can you start at that end base stringer?
That's the hope. Um, it would require us to get a lift and take maybe one, maybe two days of focused inspection on those certain spots. Basically, all the all the other forty-eight stringers that are under there, he can really just take the worst one now, do, he has the calculation, he can do the calculation, and that weakest one is the controlling member, so that does all forty-eight of those. He doesn't have to take the time and measure each one of them now and go through that whole process, so it's gonna streamline it a little bit on that stuff, but that end base stringer is something that he's gonna have to get in there and do a good inspection on, because he doesn't have their reporting on it.
So, we appropriate eight and zero that has been spent?
Yep.
I think we appropriated ten, because we needed the lift.
Right, okay. So, but none of it's been spent? Okay. So, he's at fourteen, we should be at sixteen to make the, make the rental for the the lift?
There was a no before. Number's gone up.
I know.
I'm standing out. Sorry.
So, with the emails for the state, I know that our, we requested, and I think it was about three weeks ago, because I've been over two. We asked to ask them, said, hey, we put our foot forward on a promise you guys made us. Does that stand a bearing? And I think the answer was, we were gonna get moved up again, right?
Well, it depends on if we get any bids to the RFQ. If we don't have to rebid, we won't get moved forward.
Okay.
They're gonna, it's gonna have to play out. If we get the, at least three qualified bidders, they could move us, possibly move us forward, but they wouldn't commit, because the date hasn't come and gone
Right.
when we received those bids.
Correct.
When is the deadline for the bids?
I have to check outside the door. I think it's the It's gonna
Twelve.
On January twelfth.
The twelfth, Friday, the twelfth, work on it.
Oh, same week, the eighth is Monday, yeah. So, they couldn't commit until they know that we got three.
Okay. But they said it looked promising.
It's all iffy.
Yeah.
If this happens.
We got whoever, if we get bids, wherever we award them to, how busy are they?
Yeah, yeah, and where are they gonna be twenty-five, six? Who knows? Right.
They ain't putting sort of timeline on their bid? They sent their bid out?
Well, they moved us up in the bid date-wise, because we were gonna, um, I think it was the end of October, and they moved us to August.
Yeah. It's ours.
They moved us up a few months.
They put them out to contractors, they didn't have a timeline.
Our responsibility.
We have, we have to do everything.
Our responsibility, put it up.
We have to put everything out, and moving forward, we, it's, let's pick, gotta have at least three bid on it. I sent it out to twenty-one people. We put it in construction summary, we put it on the website, um, I put it in the, um, union leader, so that would circle more people, and hopes of getting at least three, that's their minimum qualifications. I've got some people that said, thank you, we're too busy.
Yeah.
So, we don't know how many there's of those out there.
Kind of like thought, what, what we might run into is the, sorry, we're too busy type thing. So. All right, so, number's gone up a little bit. It's doubled. And then, on top of that, if he had to actually engineer it, I mean, because the, the fourteen's not gonna get us a stamp. That's just gonna get us a
It's possible.
Yeah, it's possible, but I think there's an, there could be, again, we don't know, another step. Because if you remember, the email had eight, and then the second step had the twelve, fourteen.
We found out that the state came out for another inspection in October.
That we didn't know about?
That we didn't know about
That was nice of them.
until all this came up with Tom and emailing them. And they hadn't marked anything new as downgrading the bridge.
But they wouldn't have did.
It was legitimately a week before we had everything buttoned up and finished.
But they wouldn't lift it, obviously.
There's, yeah.
Yeah, real nice. Been nice we could've pushed that off for a week or two. All right, what's the rest of the board think?
Can you explain the inspection in October again, please?
It's, uh, DOT's inspection that they're they're not doing annually anymore. It's eighteen months or something like that. And obviously, they don't, they didn't tell us when they were doing it. But they came out a couple of weeks before we had repairs finished on the bridge, so the timing didn't work out in our favor there.
Did we get an inspection report?
We did have one.
What does it say?
From, from them in August? I mean, in October?
Yeah, it's, they haven't marked anything new. It's the same as the previous one in, I think, twenty twenty?
Six ton?
Yeah, yep, yeah.
They, they put that on there, though?
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing in there that indicates the weight rating should be lifted.
Or changed, or?
Changed, anything.
Which makes sense, since the repairs weren't finished.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, they haven't, they didn't mark anything new to downgrade the bridge even more, any more bad spots.
That's good.
Yeah. It's a good thing, but a, uh, Tom said probably four to six weeks after approval. If there were a good approval.
Did he say why he wouldn't just go out and do the visual that we talked about, meeting before last?
Yeah, essentially the same thing, but, um, nowadays, got calculations from the state. Do a little bit more targeted inspections instead of a broad inspection of the whole bridge.
So, that number that we had of, what, thirty, has come down?
It will, um.
Be- because of those numbers that the state provided?
It's hard saying. I mean, the calculations, he's got files from the state that he can just add numbers into, do the calculations by their numbers, double-check them real quick, and then, there's part of that twenty to thirty thousand done in the fourteen, fifteen thousand dollar mark that we're talking about now. So, there could be some additional costs on top of that to finish the weight rating, but to get the yes-go-ahead or no-stop could be up to that much. It's more of a hybrid rating and inspection versus the first
Which was
kind of talk we had, which was inspection of the whole bridge first, gathering a whole bunch of numbers, and then him going ahead and doing all the weight calculations by himself without there.
Some of them have already been done nowadays, they've checked. So, it sounds like that, still sounds like that second part that we were talking about three weeks ago won't happen.
There's still
As substantially.
There's still gonna be some there. But like I said, the rest of those forty-eight stringers can just pick the weakest one, do the calculation, and it does the whole thing. He talked about getting the original weight rating to see if the bridge is built four times heavier than it needs to be.
Right.
Do the calculations real quick. If those stringers are only deteriorated half, the bridge is still twice as strong as it needs to be.
Got you.
But these are all things that he's gotta
He's gotta take a look.
Look into.
So, what's your recommendation?
I'd like to see it open. Just plainly for our sake to plow over it this winter. It's a, it's a real pain in the butt to go around it. Even a one-time loaded, it's too heavy for it. Technically.
And what, what's Tom looking for now, money-wise? Fifteen, you said?
Yep. Oh, fourteen, we're gonna put two on it for the lift, right? But we had already incorporated the two in the lift from the last time, too.
Right.
Which was eight, so we upped it to ten. So, we're looking for a sixteen this time. But again, not a dollar, the eight's been spent. So.
The eight hasn't been spent, right?
Negative.
So.
Correct, so. I mean, at this point, I'd like, I'd like to see it open, too, and I think that I mean, do you, you seen underneath it, do you feel confident that there's hope?
We fixed everything that they marked to flag it down. And this second, or this inspection that we just got in October.
Didn't flag anything, no.
It didn't flag.
And they, and they were, and they were looking at the, obviously, the floor stringers as well.
Yep.
When they, when they did their inspection.
And that's after we've cleaned the bridge up.
Yeah.
Underneath, we spent time cleaning underneath there.
And they didn't, they didn't flag any of them, so it sounds like it's a pretty good chance it's gonna get its number. If they didn't flag anything in October. Which they, they did the full inspection, so. I'm sure if they
First, there isn't much lower to go than six ton.
True. Right. Closed, yeah, I gotta say, yeah, so.
In the river.
Yeah, so they were only inspecting it to six ton, though, right? Not to
No, they, they did the full, they did the full inspection. I mean, it's, I, am I wrong in saying that? They did the full inspection?
No, they, they do an inspection, and then, um, based on what they get, they'll recommend a weight rating be lifted, or lowered, or stay the same.
But our repairs hadn't been completed, so. I know you're a no vote. Any comments?
Yeah, seems more hopeful than last time. Which is a good sign. Yeah, especially to the top end. We're talking maybe forty. It's no longer all the way up there. Now, it's maybe
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five at the top end. It's more palatable.
Sherri, any thoughts?
We're kinda stuck between a rock and a hard place. I think we're gonna have to do it to find out, and, you know, it doesn't just affect the highway department, it, you know, it affects
Buses, businesses.
Businesses and buses going through it.
Fire department.
All of it, I mean.
Home heating fuel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot. Yeah?
Yeah, it's gonna be affected when we tear it out, too.
Oh, yeah.
I'm still mad this is the route that it went, but this is the route that it went, so. You know? All the money and the hard-worked highway department put in, I hate to just mince it now, I guess.
Yeah, that's kinda my thoughts, too. On top of getting it opened up, if possible.
You know?
I guess a hopeful thought I had was
It's been down a year, and it's gonna be down more now. We're opening it for a short period of time, I guess. This make me feel a little bit better that that new steel and the work that the guys put in. Might get used for a couple of weeks anyway. I don't know.
Well, and the other thing is, too, is we could get, we could get an RFQs back. And we could be out, we could be out two years. So, it could be a two-year fix if we get a, if we get a C-two rating. You know, so.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to say, like you say, a couple of weeks. I'd like to say that, too, myself, but could be a couple of years if
Oh, and I think it will be, by, by the time they finish all the rest of the permit and then get
Yeah.
Get the
A contract lined up.
Cause they're gonna have to redo the road approach and everything. Hopefully, they put the right bridge in, so.
Hopefully. Plan.
Well, I'll vote to, to go up to sixteen thousand, including that lift.
Okay, that's not like a motion.
No.
That sounded like a motion.
Oh, Janice, I was about to speak to her, did you, I was coughing?
No, I didn't. It does sound more hopeful than it did last time, and, you know, I'm thinking about it even more since we did last talk. We're, we're probably looking at a bit, uh, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-four months before we actually do this work, even if we do get moved up on the schedule.
That's kinda what my vote is.
So, if we can get that thing open for fifteen to twenty-four months, I think that's worth a couple of thousand dollars. I don't know that it's worth much more than, you know, thirty, um, I wouldn't, didn't like the number before. But I did vote last time to spend the ten K, so I would, I would support spending the fifteen, or sixteen.
Sixteen.
Okay. All right, it's not like you made a motion.
All right.
And I'll second it.
I'll move to, uh, well
To sixteen.
Up to sixteen thousand dollars be spent on on the inspection of
Inspection and engineering, probably?
Inspection rating.
Inspection rating of the River Road Bridge.
That's coming from the Bridge Maintenance and Reconstruction Fund?
Last time, we, we're doing it out of, uh, year-end.
Yeah, it's on the year-end list.
Okay.
The inspection part, we were gonna do out of the year-end.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we
Is that still, is that still viable?
Yeah, yeah. We've changed it to a, a little bit of a hybrid, but I don't see a reason why we can't.
So, it'll come from year-end?
Come from year-end, so I know.
Okay, all still second it. Motion on the floor and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Move forward. Okay. Don't sit down. Uh, word or discuss asset management and software?
So, we did get four bids. Two bids on the top of your bid sheet are the two packets you have in front of you. Nuvo Solutions and Iwork Systems were the two that stood out to me. Uh, if I would recommend one to you guys, it would be the Nuvo Solutions. I know that they are just a tad bit more expensive uh, compared to the Iwork, but the Iwork Systems equipment maintenance software was just a little lacking compared to the Nuvo Solutions. The Nuvo Solutions actually incorporates a lot of things all in one package, whereas Iwork System, you didn't have to buy extra packages. Nuvo Solutions will do sewer, water, stormwater, equipment maintenance. All in one. All in one fee, no extra packages. That was kinda one of the big selling points. The demo that I got, um, being kinda my mechanical background, I suppose, um, their equipment maintenance software was actually very nice, easy to use. Um, their work order stuff for regular road maintenance was pretty standard with all the rest of the stuff that we did see.
I know you said when you were, as far as the work orders for the road maintenance stuff, that you only have an iPad at yourself, or if you inform somebody, you have, but that still be something comes to your computer that you or your secretary can print out and just have
Exactly, yeah.
Like a clipboard outside on the walls, the guys get back early, they can take a couple.
Yep. Yeah, that was, um, that was the hope, when we do get somebody down there who can, you know, go around and maybe add some things that he sees during the day or whatnot. Then, uh, myself or secretary can print some things, just some, you know, hour projects, half-hour projects that somebody gets back, they can just
Just wanna know something on the board. They don't wanna be so everybody either has to have their phone tapped into this, we have to have an iPad.
Yeah, exactly.
It's only for everybody, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
We do the same thing when guys are out and they see something, you'd be fixed it, tell the secretary to put something out, but just wanna make sure that can be done, too, so we don't have fifteen iPads when you come full staff.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's, uh, it's pretty versatile that way. You can, um, both print them off like that, as well as, um, if somebody does if anybody is using their phone personally, they can access it on the internet, and I can assign projects to a specific person, so if they log in, they can see their project. Um, so, if the secretary logs in, I take a day off or something, I can assign guys work for the next day or the week, or
Pretty handy.
Yeah, yeah, it, uh, takes a bunch of phone calls off of me when I got the day off. I know you know what that feels like, but yeah. I, I think it'll be a huge benefit for us.
We were happy, you just said you're happy with the maintenance in you, one of your room in there, they put part numbers
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep, inventory for our parts, inventory for the culverts or catch basins, or stuff we have out back for road maintenance. All that stuff is wrapped in there.
Um, I'd asked you the question on the Iwork Systems, which you had said at the time was just an example, um, about, like, other departments being able to use it, and then I was flipping through the executive summary list, a whole bunch that would be listed in the Novo. Like, for this, you, like you had said, it's one price gets you all the public work stuff you're listing, the water stuff you already listed. They also mentioned public records requests, code enforcement, uh, a whole list of things for fire, a whole list of things for police, IT, help desk and asset management, and then department performance and dashboard. And then department performance and dashboard for other departments.
Yeah, so that would, um, there's a cost associated with numbers of users.
Okay.
So if we added in more departments, it's feasible, um, it would just be.
Do you know what that cutoff is?
I don't. Should be how many users in the quota.
Uh, it says unlimited. It's population based, but right now we're at the seventy-five hundred to nine thousand nine ninety-nine. So, gotta keep anybody from moving. So, yeah, I just bring it up, um, I think that does help justify the higher price a little bit and it's, yeah, it's something that we could look at using, um, in other departments. Did you say that was end of year money?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Looked to put the annual software in the budget.
With the understanding it will not be in the default.
That was the only thing I guess that bothered me was, by doing it at the end of the year, if it go to fault, then hate to see you. Put that much money and work into something that is up in the air next year.
That's my, yeah.
I think the idea is great, I don't have a problem with that, I just don't, the funding thing bothered me the last time, but I just, we, we're just talking about it, I guess. We haven't made a decide, decision on that yet, I didn't think so.
No.
I, I definitely think it's a good idea, we definitely need something like this. I mean, from what I can tell, everything is very much manually tracked, if at all. But I also don't think we should vote on putting something in that the voters haven't voted for yet on a yearly basis. Where basically if we buy the software this year, we have to continue up with the software every year, otherwise it's worthless, so.
Makes sense.
I'm wondering if like where you can have up to, what, nine hundred and ninety-nine people?
Almost ten thousand.
Or ten thousand, yeah, whether you could split that three or four small towns.
I don't think that would get confusing, cause if he's got a P1 and Henner's got a P1 and they put P1 in for a unit number, it'd make it confused. There, there may be confusion there.
I'm just thinking that you could set, you might be able to put where at the top and then another line goes to Boston, another line that says, I don't know, I'm just wondering.
Needless for me, I guess, the money doesn't bother me as bad, it shocked me, I think the first time you mentioned it. I just want to see it take all your putting work in and then.
Yeah.
Next you call and tell them we can't do it no more. That's my only concern about it.
Is your request for the year end money, the, the thirteen, three oh five?
The initial, yeah, yeah.
So then twenty-five.
Be ten.
Would be ten. Yeah.
Well, probably have to pay it in December twenty-four, if you buy it in December twenty-three.
Kinda be about the same time, year end.
You encumber it and buy it in January.
Right.
They didn't indicate if they thought there would be a percentage increase each year.
No, this, the Nuvo Solutions would be the. I mean, realistically, the equipment side, costs with maintenance and maintenance getting done on time and timely manner, keeping track of that, it's gonna pay for itself.
Yeah, like I said, I definitely think it's a good idea, just hesitant of voting something in that the voters haven't approved. Cause it's not just a one-time fee, it's a yearly fee.
Let's come in. But I mean, I, I guess, you know, if the money's not there next year, it's, it's not a multi-year contract.
That's correct.
Um, and I know I'm gonna get chastised for this later in the statement, but I'm gonna say it anyways, is I don't see Jason hiring a slew of drivers in the next six months. I'm sure there'll be year-end funds to pay for it again in the same bucket when we get there this time next year.
Your intention ever to put it in the budget?
Yeah, he's, he put it in there.
Yeah.
It's in the budget, he put it in his proposal, yeah. Yeah, he did put it in his proposal.
Okay.
But if we go default, it's not gonna be in there, obviously, so. So, I, well, I agree with the sentiment, it's just, you know, it could be. But again, you're gonna put a lot of effort and set, are they gonna set it up with some direction from us or do, are we gonna, how much, how much time effort we gonna put in to set up roads and stuff like that?
They'd go off of Google Maps.
Okay.
Um, and basically I can go through, you can pick sections of the road. You can pick a whole road, like river roads, sections of it, this is green, this is yellow, this is whatever. Um, I can add all that information in, um, and all the work order stuff, they'll have a conference call and get some training on it. Um, myself and the secretary will do that.
But do you feel that they're gonna do a fair percentage of the work of inputting data that we need to make it functional?
Yeah, they're gonna ask how we want our work orders templated, how we want our equipment maintenance templated, all that stuff, that go ahead, make a template for us. Um, and then if we do any changes in the future, it's super easy, we can make those changes right on the website.
Okay.
Um, or we can call them and have them help us do it.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, again, to Ben's point of put all his time and effort into it and we get nothing at the end.
Yeah, cause I know.
They will back it up, it's not gonna all be lost, but.
We got an email from our finance administrator before this meeting saying, hey, please.
Go easy.
Yeah, please try and withhold as much end-of-year surplus as possible. That's, that's my summary of her statement, she didn't use those words exactly.
Right. To try and get us back to that five percent, retain.
So, we're, yeah, I'm kind of in that same boat of, I think it's a really good idea. I, I would appreciate more time to also say, hey, let's sit down with these folks and see what other departments we can get in the same system with the same dollar amount. We talked about some of the thoughts, um, last time, but their list included even more than the, the couple of ideas we were taking. So.
And they got code enforcement in there, too?
Yeah, yeah, some of them are good, like, these are the ones he's talking about right now.
Right.
And then, yeah, public records requests, code enforcement, a whole bunch of things for fire, handful of things for police, IT, help desk, asset management.
Is he there?
What's that?
I just wanna take a quick look at it.
So, yeah, I think we've gotta start chipping away at the, uh, building back our, uh.
Designate fund balance.
Oh, thank you, designate fund balan, uh, or unassigned fund balance, um. And I think, I think with the list we have in front of us, everybody's gonna be upset by the end of this.
Yeah, that's a given.
We're gonna start. My, my proposal is, uh, do not spend end-of-year funds on this, but I would really like to make sure, or I would, I would encourage people to look at it and make sure it gets. You know, I think it's good that it's in the budget, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Janice?
I, I, I restate that I don't think we should spend year, end-of-year money on it and commit to something for next year that the voters haven't approved, yeah.
Sherri?
I'd agree. Janice, under concern, got a lot of stuff, you know, that people want, but you only can get so much, and like you said, the, the voters haven't. Haven't agreed to funding it, you know. I think it's a great product, but.
I think it's excellent, I think it will have very big impact on lots of departments, not just DPW.
Yeah.
I can see fire and police both getting benefit from it, as well as some of the town office.
They did the code enforcement in there, too, so, yeah.
Um, Vic, I'm sold on it, I agree, the more we get departments that can.
Benefit from it.
Benefit good, but I'm sold on it just for Jason's department, as far as the. We do barbaric work orders a hundred times better than when I did no work orders here, I mean, the guys come back with an hour left or two hours left. Get it worked on and go do that one little pothole by a mailbox that they keep calling, wasn't on top of your mind and you keep forgetting about. Make your life so much easier, make department shine and get a new mechanic for the maintenance side of it. Just, the funding is, is the only thing, I had a question to, to start with, that's all, other than that, I'm, you know, for awarding it to. Nuvo Solutions, I just, uh. I do believe you could probably find ninety-nine fifty next year in your, in your budget, if the budget went default, I would go in, but. This would suck if you didn't, that's all.
Again, I'm, being a user of maintenance software, it's, it's literally just, you can't do the job without it now, um, effectively anyways. So I completely agree with Ben's sentiment, but sounds like we got a three-two here.
I mean, are we gonna go through every single one of these line by line and like make motions for it, so I'm happy to just make it now, that's where.
I don't know if we're, I think it'll be more like a yes, no, yes, no.
Then, then, yeah, I guess I would just encourage us then to, yeah, maybe, maybe.
Revisit and.
Uh, I'm trying to think of the right term, I don't know, just, just a verbal, what's our, what's our, what's our sentiment?
Well, that's.
I think you're right, three-two.
I, I think we got a three, no, one or two yes.
I think so.
At this point, that's what it sounds like. That's what it sounds like to me.
That's what I think I heard as well.
Do you wanna, are you involved in anything at the River Road intersection?
No.
Huh? Huh?
I said I'll hang around.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Be up here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with you, yeah, 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 we're all set with Jason, right? Okay. Okay. Alright, um. You? Yeah, that's kinda what we're talking about, so. What's that? Hold that thought.
Okay.
Just so we can all be on the same page.
Thank you.
Okay. So I don't think that we need to discuss what's already been approved.
Correct.
As far as the cop sound locking key for the re-lock and the cameras, the laptop for evidence, the ICAC and the desktop. So when you talk about those, already been.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, I see where it says approved now.
Yeah.
Are we adding? We discussed some in the, are we adding it to this?
Yeah, we'd have to. Uh. Would we have to, or would that just come out of the line? The, the uniform discussion. Would that just come from the uniform line?
Should this do come from the uniform line, yeah?
Huh?
It's come from his budget on the uniform line.
Okay. So. Okay.
That, that one we approved, that for the buildings?
That was, yeah, that was one, was the one that was discussed. He approved. So, alright, um.
One by one, or how are you gonna do?
Yeah, we'll go one by one, so we'll go with the ammunition.
Ammunition, so Sergeant for Animal Pleasure, uh, filling in for Chief Moore, who's out of state right now. Uh, ammunition, the chief is looking to resupply, uh, ammunition for the armory. We are sending officers to training, we've had multiple officers go through the academy this past year and our supply is extremely low. In some ammunition, we're completely out, is my understanding of that. Uh, Chief Moore is looking for the authorization for five thousand and twenty-one dollars of year-end money, um, to be spent on ammunition to resupply, uh, what we are lacking. Ammunition prices continue to go up, so obviously he's trying to buy it prior to prices going up and having some money that we can use.
Now, I, I, I'm just gonna put a idea out with the, um, with the board, um, you know. Obviously ammunition is bought in smaller, you can buy in smaller quantities, doesn't have to be five thousand dollars, we can buy twenty-five hundred dollars, we'll say. Right, so we could appropriate some if we didn't fulfill the entire, that, that's just my point. We could say, hey, we're not quite there, but, you know, we, we understand the need, here's, whatever.
How many bullets does this five thousand dollars worth buy?
Not twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred bullets?
It's not.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I know we're sending two officers to raider training, um, which is training for rifles, uh, and more qualifications. So they can then come back and train our other staff members how to properly use the equipment in an efficient manner. Our Corporal Valero also has training coming up that is gonna require firearms training and whatnot, so we are desperately low on ammunition.
Well, that's very expensive, there's no doubt about that.
You have ammunition in your operating budget though, don't you?
There's gonna be a line for it.
Yes, there is a line for it.
How much have you spent so far this year versus budget?
Is there a specific line, do you know?
I would think there would be.
Ballistic equipment, uh, so our approved budget, or is, no, that's, uh, ballistic vests, that's not ammo.
Was it your training line or?
I don't believe it comes out of training line.
Yeah, um, he takes out a two-seventy, uh, I'm sorry, line six-ten supplies. Cause if you're looking at your budget, it's line two-seventy on the far left. And on the far right, it says, I think he meant ammunition, not ammunition.
Yeah.
Ammunition costs have increased, so this year to date, he's spent seventy-three thirty-nine.
I have an updated report that, uh, Chief Moore got from Beth just yesterday and it's seventy-nine oh-three. So we have one point two percent remaining, which equates to ninety-six dollars in that line for the year.
Thank you.
I'm assuming more, you know, more bulk you buy, the, probably the price is better. And you know, you know, it's hard to tell, cause I don't know exactly how many bullets you can shoot a year, but roughly, uh, this gets you almost a year's worth, half a year worth.
This, this should cover us for the year.
For all the next year.
I understand, yes. Pl-.
I understand, you know, if there's training.
I would think it wouldn't cover you for the year, you wouldn't be asking for it, you'd just wait till January and buy it.
Correct, this will cover us for the year for the trains that we have, plus what we have in the budget to.
Plus what you have in the budget.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So it's not to cover. So it's not to cover what's already in the budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is additional.
Can we just confirm the little bit of math I'm doing? So just, so, so we got the email from Beth that said, hey, As a recommendation, please don't dip below five percent.
Right.
She said that equated three hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. So by my math, since we have five hundred, we'll call it five thirteen.
To finish the year.
So subtracting the two, that leaves us with a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-one and sixty-two cents to, if we spent every cent of that, we would hit five percent. So if we don't wanna go below that, which I prefer not to, don't go over that number. So we started this meeting at one ninety-eight, four forty-two, and then we added sixteen for the bridge. So that takes us to one eighty-two, four forty-two. So effectively, we've got forty-three thousand dollars. Which we don't have to spend that much, but if we don't wanna go below five percent, forty-three thousand dollars for all the remaining line items. So I just wanna confirm that, Beth.
Is that, is that including that or no?
That just, that was, so, so the one ninety-eight was two thirty-one minus thirty-three, and so I took that and I just added the sixteen, which we did in this meeting. For the bridge. So this would be, you know, forty-nine.
Right.
So it's that minus that gives us one eighty-two.
One eighty-two.
And so, so now I'm saying the difference between one eighty-two, which is our right now balance, and one thirty-nine is forty-three.
Yeah, my, uh, quick math said basically the same thing. I said rounded it to one thirty-five before we started.
So, I, yeah, I just wanted to start before we go down halfway through and realize, wait a minute, we're at four point nine percent.
Okay.
So forty-three thousand is kinda
Kind of our number.
Maybe just hear the explanations of all of them from the people that are here.
I think that's, yeah, that's probably good, yeah.
Maybe convince us of something else.
Yeah.
Someplace else sense.
Oh, I'm sure they also have a priority list.
Yes, so the priority list, um, I believe Chief Moore sent this to you, um, that has a list. Have you seen this document?
I think they're in the same list. They're in the same priority. I just didn't do the color.
Okay. So the number one priority per Chief Moore is IT server. The IT server is our server that connects to Goffstown server. If that breaks on us or goes down and based on the town's IT professionals. Doug, he says we're in critical need for updates on that. If that goes down, we are not functioning. It's catastrophic, catastrophic for us if that fails. That price, uh, is ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. The second is the twenty-twenty-three body worn camera media storage and licensing fee. Uh, this is because that is not in the budget. So again, this is for twenty-twenty-three.
It's in, it's in the proposed budget for twenty-four. I'd like to hold.
I believe so.
Okay.
I would, it got slashed last year. I know that. So it didn't get on the, the budget last year.
Okay.
Um, and then the third is ammunition. We move on to ballistic shield. That's to have the ballistic shield in a cruiser for officer safety purposes. That's three thousand and fifty dollars. Training funds for Roger Williams. That's to send Officer, or Corporal, excuse me, Valero to, uh, Roger Williams first line supervisor, based on his, uh, recent promotion. Uh, the training is projected to cost about four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, which includes the course, hotels, meals, and travel expenses. That's, that's all inclusive. Uh, so the chief's looking for an extra hundred and twenty-five dollars for margin of error on that. Then after that is the patrol vehicle warrant article offset. Which is forty thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, that's after you take the, the Clough Park funds into and all the other expenditures that we have into it. We're also looking for a possible grant for a computer that could reduce that by another thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, if we can get a new patrol PC. It would be, if we can take one radio from a cruiser, re-outfit it into a new cruiser, if we're fortunate enough to get that to reduce that. Uh, and then the last is exterior door lock upgrade, price of two, which is two thousand, two hundred and five dollars.
Do we have one discrepancy? The sheet in front of us says on that, on that patrol vehicle, forty-nine thousand, nine sixty, and then What's that?
I, I got it from Beth.
I just wanna, yeah, if we can confirm which one, because you had then said forty thousand, which is the same thing the email said.
Now it's from the chief?
Uh, yeah.
Chief's listening right now.
So you don't have any training funds at all, left in the budget this year?
For this year, training. Give me one second.
I've got it actually right here. Uh, it looks like police training. Three and a half. Three thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
What's, uh, what line is that? If you don't remind me, ask me.
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Police training, so Year to date. Oh, we have a purchase order of four thousand. So it's a fifteen thousand dollar approved budget. Year to date is eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-three, but there's a PO for four thousand dollars on it. Which then shows us negative two hundred and fifty-four on that line itself. We do, but it will have a lot of training expenses. So we do have the budget line, uh, but the chief's saying that that school alone will eat up one-third of the training line itself. If we just send Officer, or Corporal Valero to that one school.
And the ballistic gear is for one shield?
Correct.
Any other questions for Sergeant Mount Pleasure while he's at the podium? We've got the, the list and we've got the We've got the numbers.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer on the, is it forty-nine or forty thousand?
I, if you give me a minute, I believe we have it on our website. I'm just trying to log on to our website right now.
Thank you.
There's nobody here. I guess it's gonna be, have to be me. Make me feel better.
There's confusion on the math. Cause, um, Beth said she's confused on the math. Five twelve surplus less five percent, three seventy-three, six twenty-four leaves a balance for year end of one thirty-nine, two forty-one. I said, has the approved column already been subtracted from the five twelve? And she said yes. So five twelve.
So it's already been subtracted.
So five twelve, the thirty-three thousand, four hundred and fifteen is already subtracted, so you're starting fresh with five twelve.
So add, add
Sixteen thousand.
So then you take one thirty-nine, two forty-one, minus sixteen. You're at one twenty.
Twenty-three.
So you add sixteen, forty-three.
So one thirty-nine, two forty-one, minus sixteen thousand.
Yeah, one twenty-three.
So it's one twenty-three, two forty-one. Missed the sixteen. It was zero for asset, sixteen for River Road. Following your list down through.
So Chief Moore's texted me, A, we can call him right now and throw him on speakerphone. He is available to talk, uh, and B, he did confirm it is forty thousand.
Forty thousand, that's all we need now.
Yep. And that's gonna go down to about thirty-seven thousand if we're able to get that, um, PD, or, um, MDT on a grant, which we're looking into.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
So where do we end up? We were at forty-three to spend. Where, so what is our actual number?
I think we add
Is it fifty-nine?
Yeah, we add whatever this
Add the thirty-three and sixteen back in.
You took it away. Add it back in, minus sixteen.
I think we're at one, I think we're at one twenty-three, two forty-one.
And then we're gonna take sixteen thousand away.
That's already with the sixteen. It was one thirty-nine, minus sixteen is one twenty-three.
So it's, so it's one
It's gonna be one twenty-three, two forty-one.
So are we talking seventy-five then?
So if you take the five twelve.
Yep.
Minus the three seventy-three, six twenty-four for retainage brings us back to five percent.
Right.
Leaves us one thirty-nine, two forty-one.
Right.
So one thirty-nine, two forty-one subtracts sixteen that you just approved for Jason and zero for the asset survey, so I have one twenty-three, two forty-one. I know that approved column, should probably shouldn't have been there.
Okay.
So we're at one twenty-three, two forty-one. Okay.
Available.
Yeah.
Available to spend if you so choose.
So where, where
The warrant article needs to be changed to forty thousand, not forty-nine.
Right.
I have a PowerPoint picture of like everything, and that number itself is based on if you guys authorize allocation of the DAM funds.
Yeah, yeah, there was a whole bunch of moving parts that came together with that. But it's, it's, it's forty thousand coming from end of year. It's not, that probably nine thousand additional is coming from the DAM fund and every other thing. Kinda the way I'm
That makes sense, yeah.
Gathering. Maybe that's where that number came from. He'll love it. Yeah, so the reuse of the radars, twenty-five hundred, but, but the actual, the funds would be, um, police detail account nineteen thousand, every DAM patrol sixteen thousand, end of year funding would be forty-one thousand, rough.
And those, but we could say all those offset except the bottom one. And then the warrant article goes with all those applied.
So it appears that the, that the, the fully is eighty-four, but because we're reusing those, it drops to the seventy-five using these. So the four-nines, the forty thousand would actually purchase the group. Does that make sense to everybody in my watchroom? Don't lose that.
Yeah.
It's a vital component to his packet.
So it wouldn't be forty-nine, right? Okay, it would be forty.
Forty. Well, it's forty thousand, seven hundred, so forty-one.
Can you speak to the fire stuff?
I mean, I'll tell you what I can. So the server and the Sonic wall, I know that those were, those are pretty, those are actually behind the PD, right, in timeline wise? Cause I remember there was a separation. There was a separation, but I think that, I think that the fire is actually older, if I'm not mistaken. But both, both servers do need the upgrade, from what I understand.
We've already been here. We've been upgraded here.
Yeah, so those are the two, and they, they were combined. There was, there was, uh, um, an event that occurred and, um
Well, I don't think CGS require, let you stay together.
Correct, and then, and there was a separation. Initially, they were together. There was an event. It was advised that we separate them, so we did separate them at that time, but that, that was That was a while ago.
That's been a while.
Been a while. Been a long time, so. So, um, that's why there's, there's a fire server and a PD server listed, so. So I would say yes.
At the bottom of the list, you still have a voting machine.
Yep, oh yeah, absolutely. Um, but we're just trying to go over what the top here. The Lucas is the automated CPR machine. Um, there's, I think there's two or three, there's two, three batteries each, each truck. Um, one in the bag, one on the unit, and one on the charger, so, um, it is, I mean, in, in times of shorthanded, um, it does, um, you know, it's an added set of hands that you don't have. Um, and also too, the, the studies have proven that the effectiveness of it is much better, um, quality CPR, because it doesn't, it doesn't tire. Right? Because as, as the studies have shown, as somebody tires out as they're doing chest compressions, the compressions get, you know, a little further apart. The, the compression factor doesn't go down all the way, so, um, it's definitely been proven, it's merit.
And is the two there, they're asking for a quantity of two?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, one for each ambulance. Each ambulance has one on it.
So they're eighteen apiece?
Yep. It's not something that we use often, I'll say, but when you need it, you want it, and it's gotta work every time. So, it's definitely, it's definitely a tool.
And, and do we have any right now?
Yes.
So this is replacement?
Yes.
And just life cycle?
Yep.
Do you happen to know how old the ones are that we have and what their life cycle is?
I don't know what the life cycle is on them. I know we bought them separately. We didn't buy them at the same time. I don't remember when we bought them though.
They're both, as far as you know, still in service?
Plenty of money left in the special revenue fund from the ambulance to ask the voters.
Yeah. That's a lot of money. I'm still, my, like, my mental mode on all this, like, we are so dangerously close to that five percent.
Yeah.
And it has gotta be, it's gotta be like a very high priority for me to say yes.
I just, I mean, I think that, here's my question for the ambulance fund, was if, if there's available money there, I think it would fly, because it's, it's technically zero tax impact, and it's something they could put on the lottery.
And that, and that, that revenue fund was specifically rewritten to purchase items like this.
So I would be in favor, you know, favor of them asking for it, just maybe in that avenue instead of us.
Okay, so I'm assuming that we're gonna push that back to warrant? That's the idea?
I would support that.
I do wanna move down to the town office. The last one, which is the Keeshan Orchard Room, um, that, we're gonna discuss that at the end of it, at the end of the night anyways. That's that five hundred and ten square feet at the end of River Road. We've already committed to that, so I think that that's a small number. I understand we've, we're still trying to, you know, decide, but I think that that, that is a priority that we need to finish, I'll say. So, just my own thought.
So this is tied to the acceptance of the five hundred
Yeah, and, and it's, it's right at the corner of, I know you, you know better, but right at the corner of Riverdale and River. And it's gonna cut that corner off some to improve visibility on the, on the, on the north side of that intersection. So. So personally, I think that that should be a yes. Fifteen hundred.
Okay, that's, I mean, is that An estimate? Is that a hard number? Do you know name?
Estimate.
But it's not gonna go over that.
We just need to finish it, to set the monuments, and then I can have the deed drawn, and we're done. Lanning has only has approved it, and then you'll accept it as a donation. It's worth less than five thousand dollars.
So it's really the final step.
So devil's advocate, what if we say no to that? What happened? It just jams it up until we spend money next year?
You know, then you don't take the corner. You haven't finished the process, you left it hanging.
Right, but does it, does that just mean we spend money next year?
It may not be there next year. It may not be there next year, and then we're, we're back.
There's a problem. I, I shouldn't say there's a problem. I think we wanted to get it done.
There's a, there's a reason.
Gentleman has offered it, and if something happens and he passes away, we're in deep
We have none.
We have none.
Yeah.
Well, I'd always live there.
In the corner.
You might not always live there.
I just wanna understand the implications.
Yep.
So, so I think that that's, to me, is kinda a no-brainer that we push forward that one. Thoughts from the right side of my table?
We have tech calls, yeah.
Yeah, if it pushes it over the finish line, and it's a good thing for the entire town, I think fifteen hundred dollars is
Intersection.
And it's a safety, um, issue as well.
Alright, so yes, that one. Uh, the voting machines, I think those are from what, two thousand and two, three?
We bought one in the school. Approximately twenty-five years old.
Yeah, the voting machines. We did have some issues last year with them. I believe that the proposal I saw Um, I believe that the proposal I saw once upon a time was basically for the same thing, just upgrade. I mean, you can't upgrade what we have internally. I think it was an upgrade for a newer model.
What were the issues we had?
Um, it wouldn't, the, 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 the chip, it wouldn't read the chip when we put it in, I think, if I remember right. Um, that's, they're really starting to be very temperamental on what they take.
Well, she sent you guys all the information. I think Janice did a follow-up and I heard her talk from Maureen about it.
I mean, they're, they're being very temperamental now what they take too.
It was something of information that she picked up at the training.
Yeah, to replace the bolt, I believe.
Yeah, I believe the intention was for the schools to buy one and we buy one.
Oh, we were gonna buy one? Okay, all right, so buy one.
I believe.
Yeah.
All right. But I mean, it's still, it's still similar.
Yeah, we buy one.
Structure. You know, it's.
For seven thousand for one.
It plugs, it still plugs into that, that cart that, that collects them, if I remember correctly.
You can give us a new cart?
The devices are twenty-five years old.
No.
Wheels are falling off the one we got.
It says NH, uh, New Hampshire law RSA six fifty-six forty requires the BOs to adopt a new device in a properly noticed public meeting and to send the Secretary of State a notice of that decision. She also included the first four pages of the information from the Secretary of State's office. I think she did that way back in an email to you guys in October.
Yeah, I was gonna say it was a while ago.
They're twenty-five years old and we buy one, the school buys one.
There you go.
So, so what you just read about accepting it in a, you know, it sounded like a public hearing though.
Yeah, it just says that we have to have a properly noticed public meeting.
The decision on the specific device.
Oh, what device to actually buy?
Well, because it's over five thousand dollars, you'll have to have a public hearing. And that's what they need to have, once we do it and vote on it, they need to have a notice sent to the Secretary of State's office.
But I think the plan was basically for the same manufacturer, same.
Yeah, she wants the, um, the L.
LHS, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
She had the chance to look at a couple of them.
Yeah.
She, she looked at, um, it says the ballot commission has voted to certify both the LHS image cast and the Voting Works electronic ballot counting devices. I was able to see both at the convention. She'd like to say with LHS, their device has a separator for the write-in ballots and they provide excellent service throughout the year.
That's huge.
The write-in, yeah.
Yeah, a separator for the write-ins, that's huge. We all, we all know that. Yeah.
Wait till January. You're gonna, you're gonna really appreciate that.
She also provided some information from the Milford moderator and the town clerk, and they've successfully used the image cast in their March twenty-three town election.
Okay.
So, I believe in just, uh, saying yes to the funding does not commit us to that specific thing. We're not gonna bypass the public hearing or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we, yeah, you'd still have to do that cause the amount, yeah, yeah. And obviously, it's the letter of the, letter of the land, so.
So, we'll have to have a public hearing shortly?
Um, yeah, I think if we, if we earmark, if we approve at the end of the year, it would definitely, yeah, we'd have to, we'd move.
It won't be here for January twenty-third.
No, no, it won't be here for that one, but it could be here for the March one. Could be, depending on supply shortage. So. So, I guess the thoughts on the voting machine?
Uh, I kinda think.
It's twenty-five years old. It's.
It's twenty-five years old. It, um, it's gonna get used a lot over twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Four times.
Four times.
Yeah.
Uh, so we definitely.
I think the alternative is paper and pencil.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which we used to do.
Do we know if the school's gonna really?
Is the school gonna put their, their foot forward on it?
I honestly don't know. I mean, I haven't had a conversation. I'm sure Maureen will get on to that.
Well, I think even, even so, I mean, even if we get one, it's, it's still, again, last year, they were very, the, both of them, one worse than the other, was very temperamental on taking perfectly good ballots. You know, you feed it, they kick it out, feed it, kick it out, feed it, get stuck, open the machine up. I can't tell you how many times we've had to open the machine up for a jam. So, they're there. They're at their cycle. I mean, figure each machine usually puts around, I mean, if it's, if it's a, you know, it's minimum four pages every, every voter. Times a thousand people, times a thousand people roll through, you know, they've, they've seen their, their fair share counting. So.
And now we've got four down.
And we've got, you know, four this year. So, they're gonna be in overdrive, but.
Kinda bummed out on coming basis, cause them ones are a little shot.
I mean.
Lost out in the middle of one fourteen and they roll out over the year.
It may, it may come with a new place, I don't know. The way I interpreted the email, I don't think it did, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
The, the actual, the actual collection box at the bottom of the unit.
There's a computer that slides on this big black plastic.
Yeah, the big black plastic box that collects all the ballots.
You have to unlock it.
You have to unlock the backside. I don't.
They're just shabby too, but they don't have nothing to do with the counting process.
They don't actually have anything to do with the counter though.
I don't believe they do, no.
No, the counter plugs into it, but gets the power.
It's just a collection.
Wheels and stuff are in bad shape on them, so.
You don't wanna have to hand count.
Oh, no, no, that is, no. No, we'll take three days off of that. So, all right.
You can't close till it's done.
Yeah, you're telling me. Um, so I think.
I'm, I'm in favor of voting machines.
I'm in favor of it personally.
I'm a maybe, but I don't think my, I think I'm outvoted regardless.
Okay, so I think we're gonna put a Y next to that one. All right, um, that brings us to the PD stuff. Which.
You got PD and fire.
Yeah, I was gonna say, did we decide anything on the other two things?
I mean.
The CPR machine, right?
Yeah, well, the CP, the CPR, we decide to send a warrant, yeah. That's the only thing we decide on there. Um, I mean, I think, I mean, you of all people, Sam would know the, the server, you know, conditions and stuff, and it's gotta be at least, I mean, that was pretty early in my tenure that that separation, so we're talking eight years at least on them, if not more. Um, cause one of them might have been reused when they separated. I can't remember. So.
Yeah, I don't remember the date.
Yeah. And I know that there was, there was talk at the podium, um, from the fire chief about trying to improve for the emergency management side of it. Um, and that was gonna be updated for that. So, and I think that's where this, the wireless and the sonic wall probably play in to that.
It's a combination between the fire and the EMS.
Right.
One of my, one of my only misgivings is that since the wireless change here, like, I still can't get on.
I know.
The wifi. So, like, we just spent money on this building, and if we're gonna get the same result in that building.
That, that building's actually pretty fair from, in all aspects of it. It works in the bays, works in all the rooms inside, and even if you step outside the, the bay door, it's there. So, that one's pretty fair over there. Again, I don't know what it's got for a, you know, a router, et cetera.
Sure.
But, but it's pretty fair. I mean, personally, I'd be, I would be in favor of the two servers, both houses.
That was the police number one.
Mm-hmm. Well, again, as the sergeant said, I mean, that crashes down and it's lights out. It's all over. Yeah, it's all over. So. And obviously, it was put number one because of the advice that they got from our vendor. So.
Do you mind explaining that cloud storage again? Do you mind explaining that cloud storage again?
For the media. For the, uh, media storage? So, that is based on, we use Axon body worn cameras. All of our incidents, arrests, public contacts, everything gets uploaded to the cloud after hundred and eighty days. If we have not tagged it as an incident that needs to be saved, it automatically gets deleted, but things are up on the cloud as far as media storage. Last year in, uh, twenty twenty-two going into twenty twenty-three, Chief Moore tried to get it into the operating budget, um, based on decisions that were made, it was removed from the proposed budget. So, we do not have that money in our account whatsoever. Uh, so this is for the twenty twenty-three. That is because when we purchase the cloud storage, it is November first through October thirty-first. Is the billing period. So, this is gonna be for the November twenty twenty-three billing cycle for the year.
So, are we without right now? Are we, like, like, because, I mean, we're past November. So, what's going on right now?
Uh, I do not believe, I think they send us an invoice and we haven't paid it yet, is my understanding on that.
Um, do you know, is that, I've got, I've got it front of me. Is that in the proposed budget for twenty-four?
I'm sure Chief Moore put it in. Um, as he put it in.
I'm trying to skim through. That would only, that would take us to seventy-four. Yeah, I guess that is pretty much the same.
Yeah, 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 I got you. Okay.
So, it's in the budget now?
It's in the proposed.
It's in the proposed.
But we don't, if it does propose to the past.
And I asked about that one because it's the number two on the police priority list. Um, and then AMO, and most of here.
How many shields do you guys have now?
Ballistic shields?
Yeah.
Two.
Two, okay.
So, chief is saying that we are not without it, but we have to pay the invoice. So, we haven't paid that invoice yet.
Okay. Sitting there waiting.
Correct.
Got it.
So, this is not to get a jump on the twenty twenty-four cost. This is just to rectify the fact that we don't have twenty twenty-three money in the budget.
Correct.
So, there should not be an, an equivalent debit to your twenty twenty-four proposed budget because you need that money in twenty-four.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
So, the three, the server, the server, and the sonic wall and wireless comes to twenty-six thousand, for what that's worth.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, and my calculations, if we, cause we approved, I put instead of the forty thousand for the River Road bridge, I put twenty-four, cause it's closer.
But we just did sixteen. Not sixteen.
All right, so minus eight thousand. Okay, so sixteen for that, the two sonic wall, the two servers, the sonic wall, the voting machines, and the monuments, which we've, which were on the fence, is fifty, fifty-one thousand. If we were to prove all that.
Do you mind reading that list again?
Yep, the River Road bridge, the server, the sonic wall and wireless, the second server, the voting machines, and the monument. And that was fifty thousand seven hundred. That's why I came up with it. Yep. If we approved all those.
Uh, okay, yeah. So, I think that's a good baseline with a couple more to, that I, I would, I think are worth discussing. The cloud storage, like we just talked about.
Yep.
And some amount of BMO.
Yep, I would agree. I guess, I guess before we get, is that fifty, fifty thousand seven hundred, is that good with the rest of the board? Are we kinda, are we approving those, those servers and sonic wall as well?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm in favor. I'd rather, I'd rather have it and be up to date.
I hate stuff like that. The only thing about it, and we have a vendor that provides a service to him, he's a service, of course, he's gonna do, but.
Right.
Won't crash either.
No. And another thing is too, is, is I don't know, you know, maybe it, it deems a phone call to find out why we still can't get on here, right? It, you know, it's a, hey, by the way, it's not quite working the way we thought it would. There's something they can do.
I mean, the whole thing, like, I've been trying to use calculator and email and just keep popping on and off.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So.
I, I'm, I'm able to get on, so I don't know that it's a hundred percent an issue.
It's just this end of the table?
Yeah. It might just be that half of the room, I don't know. Um, so it's, it's either intermittent or it's something specific in a, in a line. Um, so to answer your question, Ricky, yes, I'm, I'm on board.
Okay.
I, I would like to know if we can do anything with the existing servers.
I mean, are they completely down?
If the chief is still listening. Well, no, I don't, I think it's, I think it's upgrades across the board. But like, what can we do with old equipment? Ship them off to the white farm, whatever.
Yeah, I think that.
Can you repurpose as a secondary backup? I don't know anything.
Yeah, you might be able to use it as some kind of backup, but.
I just didn't know if you could use it as a secondary backup.
Yeah, I don't.
It's about to be a seance.
He's typing. He's on the plane about to take off again, but you might have him for another minute.
So, you've got fifty-seven, seven, seven, seven?
I have five zero seven hundred.
Oh, I added seventy-two fifty-four, so five zero seven hundred. I added the seventy-two fifty-four for the bottom one.
Cloud storage.
Oh, okay.
That got me to five seven, 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 seven.
Makes sense.
Which, if you subtract it from the one thirty-nine, two forty-one, you're at eighty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Right.
But, and then you would add that.
Money again, left?
I have eighty-one, four sixty-four.
Okay. So, um, to answer your question, Jess, I got a message from the fire chief, uh, the life cycle replacement on those, um, CPR machines is ten years. And the, um, they were serviced a couple months ago, and there's no more replacement parts for the ones that we have now.
Thank you. You look perplexed.
Chief, just look at training expenses. Lots of schools which are expensive. CPR first aid this year, one thousand dollars. Lead, uh, Doug said he is going to use our existing server as a backup.
There you go. So, they're not completely gone, but.
And that's what they're gonna do with ours downstairs, is make a backup.
Okay. So, all right, so, so I think that we yesed both, both servers and the sonic wall?
Yes.
At this time? Okay.
And the cloud storage?
We were gonna, yeah, we haven't quite talked about that, but I think that that's kind of a.
You gotta have it.
Gotta have it. I mean, it's, and, and, you know.
Well, it isn't so much as we got to have it. We, it sounds like we gotta pay the bill.
Well, yeah, there's that too. Um, well, I think the bill is for the next cycle, I think. We, we.
We've used it.
We've been saying.
Oh, okay, all right.
He's got it in the budget. The budget passes for the next year.
Okay.
Correct.
So, it won't be really, this one I guess I'm in favor of, cause we're not even offsetting.
Well, the other thing.
Nothing for next year's budget. We're paying a.
Yeah, the other, the other thing is too, is I mean, how, I, I, I can't count how many times I've heard, and I'm sure that you can confirm.
They save us.
How many times that body worn camera has, has, you know.
Absolutely, without a doubt. Best investment this town could have made.
And we use those instead of dash cams too.
Correct.
Yeah.
We do not have cruiser cams, we just have body cameras.
Right. Aren't we one of the first municipal agencies to get?
Two thousand fifteen.
I was gonna say, I, I guess I, I thought that when I first got on the board, I remember you, you were.
The day after we had an altercation down at Palmer's Tavern back then.
Palmer's, yes. How could one forget? Yes. Okay, so, um, I think that's a given.
If we can consider as well, I'm just going off of what Chief Moore's saying, the training line.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, training is expensive.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Very expensive, uh, just with the recent promotion of Corporal Valaro with Roger Williams. Uh, we currently do not have an accident reconstructionist, uh, which is three courses that you need to go through. Those are expensive as well to be able to be self-reliant, unfortunately, in law enforcement. Safe police, I believe, the most recent number is seventy guys. They don't come out unless.
There's seventy down?
Seventy troopers down was the last number I heard. I don't know.
In two B or Statewood?
Or just draw out the state, but state police doesn't have a thousand troopers either.
No.
Right? So, we need to be self-reliant on our skills and capabilities so we can serve the people, men and women of the town aware and provide them the services they deserve and expect.
Is that what the Roger Williams training is?
So, the Roger Williams training is a first line supervisor course for a new supervisor. It's risk mitigation. Um, so if anything ever happened, we are properly training our supervisors on the street on decision-making at the.
You did say that earlier, I'm sorry.
So, I guess the next kind of tier, I think, cause we kinda, kinda did like the technology stuff over the top based on the priority listed. So, then the next one would be AMO, uh, uh, the one shield. And training would be the next. It's number five overall, that puts it third up. So, from what you said, I guess he, is he, I know you're going off of what little info you have right now, uh, is he suggesting that training is more important than AMO and a shield?
Cause, yeah, cause that's.
Based on the text message I am getting in my conversations with Chief Moore, uh, I believe his answer's gonna be yes, I don't think he's taken off yet.
I wouldn't think he would say it's more important than ammo, but probably more important than the ballistic shield.
He's, he is responding.
Oh, boy.
He has quick thumbs.
Yeah, so.
No, so AMO and shield over training.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Top choice, so he says.
Oh, I'm sure.
Okay, so we're, we're floating at, uh, I'm gonna call it fifty-eight.
Yeah, it's fifty-seven, seven, seven, seven.
Before that next kind of bracket, AMO, shield.
Yep.
Training.
Correct.
And if we talked about all those, eighty-five thirteen, that would take us to about seventy-one, I'll call it seventy, I'm gonna call it seventy-two.
If you did all of the police priorities except for the cruiser, with everything else that we've already talked about, that gets you to seventy-three five.
That was with the doors and the.
Yes, with the doors, with the training, with the shield.
And that would leave us about fifty thousand unspent to go back.
Sixty-five, seven thirty-eight.
Number one twenty-three.
Sixty-five and go back?
Yes. In addition to.
The three seventy-three.
Yes.
Had we put the, had we put the, uh, EPW asset software to bed, or were, did, was that before we decided to run it down to the list?
I think we.
Just went over, look, anybody else?
We, we, we put it to bed because of the, the following year commitment.
Yeah, if it were a standalone software for that money and not have a yearly commitment, I would be all over it. I do think it's got a lot of productivity.
It bothered me, I just, I hadn't, you know, wasn't, didn't mean it was absolutely no, I just wanted to. I think it's a good, would be a good tool to implement it. I guess, I guess that would be, I think, majority, it's fine, I guess that would be above some of the others for me, is what you might ask.
Yep, I got you.
I don't know, the other. Well, if they're, if they're short on the ammo. Don't, don't have it, and if they can get enough so that next year's budget will carry them through next year, other than that, I don't know, I think we picked it pretty good, in my opinion.
I guess.
Not in favor of buying a vehicle, because it just has never went over no.
No, no, not either.
I think it'll pass, I'm in favor of him getting a vehicle.
Oh, yeah, 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 on the warrant, on, on the warrant, yeah, 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 and I'm, I'm, the way that that's laid out, as far as getting it down to that number of forty-one, is probably more pliable than anything, so.
Oh, I think.
I think that's very attractive.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it'll go for sure.
Yeah. I guess, you know, we've, we've. So we've, we approved, obviously, we're down to PD now, um, pretty much all we got left. We approved the server, the cloud, and we've stopped there, correct? We haven't said anything else yet?
Correct.
You want to say something?
I'm just making.
Okay. I guess my.
Well, number two was the ballistic gear, eh?
Yep, uh, no, no, that was number four.
Four.
Ballistic gear was number four, AMO was three.
Yep.
Training, five.
Training was five.
And.
What was, what, two?
Cruiser was, uh, two was the body one camera storage.
Oh, alright, we did that.
Yeah, yeah. I guess my thought would be, um, obviously, they, we need the ammunition, and I would say the training.
Something bothered me about the training, I, I guess it doesn't matter how they spend it, but somebody was for one particular kind of special training for one person.
I don't.
No, there's, so the accident reconstruction, uh, that's one training, we want to send the five thousand, yes, that is for one officer, uh, but the benefit to that is risk mitigation and liability mitigation, by having a supervisor go to these trainings will mitigate any risk of liability for the town. We want to train our supervisors to be effective and efficient leaders.
And like, sorry to say, you know, you can't rely on the state police to come do their accident reconstruction every time.
I get that, I just was understanding that this was for that one.
Correct, that, that five thousand is for the one course for Roger Williams, which is a two-week course in Rhode Island.
But, I'm, I'm thinking that, that maybe we table the, the lock upgrades. I, I think that the, the training has merit, I agree that ammunition has merit, obviously.
So what was the, what's the deal with the lock upgrades?
So, we currently upgraded the booking room lock, so we can actually get out of the building again without using a hard key.
It's handy.
Works phenomenal, um, so what we're trying to do on that, it's not mission critical at the end of the day.
Yes.
It's to have one integrated system right now, with the key lock updates, we're gonna have it, our IDs be our passes to get out of the building, and then we have a different fob to get into the building on different sides. This would allow us to have one integrated system.
Would use your ID for everything.
Correct, if, for financial reasons, we can't do it immediately, that is not mission critical by any means.
That was kind of what I was feeling.
Yeah, next to it. And it's, it's, just a diatribe a little bit, it's, it's tough staring at these, like a budget, and the millions of dollars, but then you look at like, two grand, that's somebody.
Yeah.
That's somebody not having to pay taxes for half a year, thirty, like, it's.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like a lot when you compare it at a two hundred thousand dollars, but it, it is to an individual.
And when you add it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we also need money to operate.
Yep, and, you know, again, I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind your, you know, your, your thought is, I'd rather be rather than five oh oh, I'd rather be five oh one if we can be, you know, so. But, again, I, I think that the ammunition is, is, obviously has its merit.
And so what's five thousand dollars, where the AMO gonna do for you, is that your good, and you're not, like, is it gonna be another five thousand end of year next year, or?
I, I would not anticipate that.
Right.
But it all depends honestly also how officers' shooting qualification, we have mandatory qualifications that we need to do every year to maintain our certification.
Mm-hmm.
An officer has a difficult time qualifying for it, for a reason, you know, as you guys know, we're looking to be fully staffed here in January, so we're not gonna need to send any more officers through the academy that choose up a lot of ammunition.
Yeah. Thoughts?
I, I, you guys would be good with the AMO and the ballistic gear, and then that, that's good for me. That's just me.
Okay.
With the training?
Or not?
No training.
Okay.
I think I'd rather do the training than the ballistic gear.
That's where I'm at with it.
I was just going by his number.
Yeah, yeah, but it sounds like there, it sounded like there could be more merit in training than, I mean, they do, they.
That's kind of where I was doing.
They do have two ballistic vests, not, I mean, ballistic shields, not saying that that's enough, but, you know, it sounds like to me there's more long-term merit.
Power.
Right.
When is good, when does that training take place, when does it take place?
The Roger Williams training?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know the specific date.
I've got it.
I'm one of.
It was in the email, I think, that he sent it there to his own.
About twenty seconds, I showed up a text message here. About twenty to forty seconds behind us, so.
So if we did the, if we did the ammunition and the training.
Oh, Roger Williams.
No ballistic and no locks brings us sixty-seven, seven, seven, seven.
The training for, uh, first-line supervisor course is April first through April twelfth of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
But also in that five thousand was part of that accident reconstruction stuff?
No, that, that's what we're gonna be allocating the normal budget line to.
Okay.
And so we can send guys, since we're gonna be fully staffed, we can start getting, sending guys some more advanced trainings to be more self-reliant.
But without this fund, you wouldn't be able to send the guy to the, uh, the accident reconstruction, because you have to send the supervisor.
We would be eating up one-third of our budget line just to send him to.
Who has gone to that training from our department?
Well, this one isn't, he asked.
The Roger, yeah, the Roger Williams, because that sounds familiar.
Yep, uh, I've gone through first line and mid-level, Sergeant Frisbee's gone through first line and mid-level, I believe, as well. Officer McGuire has gone to both, I believe, as well, uh, and Corporal Muse has gone to the first line, I believe.
So we're talking full AMO and training?
Correct.
No, no ballistic, yeah.
And no, and no locks, right.
And no cruiser.
And no cruiser, correct. That sounds reasonable?
I would be, I still vote the other way, but I think the majority is fine, because he said that ballistic was four and Roger Williams was five, that's my vote, but it's five thousand dollars either way, so.
There you go, fifteen hundred dollar difference.
Uh-huh.
It's fifteen hundred dollar difference, thirty-five hundred dollars to the ballistic.
Over the ballistic, I was looking at five thousand ammunition, we're good on the ammunition.
I think we're good on the ammunition, I think we've all, we've all.
Yeah, I'm based on, you said you're very low.
We're extremely, I believe we're out of some ammunition, that would be a good one.
So, alright, and then, I guess we'll go down the line, ballistic, the, the ballistic gear?
No.
I'm not.
Yeah, that was, I'll say, yeah.
Yes, okay.
I, I could go either way on that one, and I, I know that it would be nice to have.
Mm-hmm.
But, no.
Alright, so, that, and then the locks, just going down the line, the locks was a no?
No.
Correct, and then the training was a yes?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
No.
And a no, okay. The cruiser was a no, the voting machine was a yes, the monuments were a yes, so that brings us to sixty-seven, seven, seventy-seven. That's correct. Which still leaves some on the table.
The seventy-one, four sixty-four, plus the three.
Seventy-one to go back on top of the three sixty and change.
Plus the three seventy-three.
Seventy-one thousand going back.
Yeah, going back for the, to add to the three seventy-three.
Go four fifty back.
So, that's reasonable, I think. Do it again next year. You will.
Keep, yeah.
Uh, four forty-five, oh eighty-eight.
Maybe, maybe I'll be on that side telling what you should do, what you shouldn't do, but.
Based on the estimates, but that, it could be higher at the end of the year.
Alright, so I think we've made it through that list. Okay, alright, um, to kind of go off of that, I'm gonna flip around a little bit, um, accept the donation of the five hundred and ten square feet for River Road intersection. Yes, no, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up. Stretch your legs a little bit.
It would definitely improve, um, line of sight at intersection.
Yeah, it's gonna cut that back to the north, right?
Yeah, I think it'd be a good thing, um, we did just pave that, but it's not anything that.
We can't include on.
We can't assess again.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely safety for everybody's traveling down there.
Um, any other comments, questions, ideas, thoughts, I mean, Ben, you kind of started this, what, two, three years ago, or more?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He just called us up, and he's the one that called up.
Initiated it, yeah.
Always complained about it since the, you know, two trucking team in Boston, guys ended up put up, and trailers. Safety-wise, it's dangerous for the public.
Yeah.
You know, coming into the intersection, and the trailer's gonna turn so hard, tears, turns right over, catch basin, and.
Yeah.
The unfortunate thing is, is I paved it this, oh, the same week he called me, not really, same summer.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, I'm sure something can be done, you know, they dragged their tires in the dirt.
Yeah.
But even if they stay on the pavement, it's safer, but then, during the planning board meeting, um, there was one or two residents that live in that neighborhood that felt it couldn't be anything more than an improvement.
Yeah, exactly, that's kind of, I'm thinking, yeah, yeah, you get down there, it's just so, it's just so sharp, see?
Not perfect, because there's.
It, it won't be perfect.
It could go more, he said take as much you want, but there's poles there, so.
Yeah, yeah, you don't worry about moving utilities, most of that was that.
I don't know why you wouldn't take, what's more or less a free gift, costing us a couple dollars, get monuments up.
Yep. Any other comments? Alright, I'll move that we accept the donation of five hundred and ten square feet at the River Road intersection, um, valued at less than five thousand dollars from Joseph A.
Assault.
Assault.
Second.
Moving the seconded, all those in favor?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
We're all set, we're all set with Jason? Okay. Yeah, alright, uh, we'll move to the decision on the acceptance of the AFIS machine. So we got our, I know that there was, again, I was out a couple weeks, but I was just paying attention, um, there were some questions asked last week, um, those have been answered, I believe, by the. The state police representative, Murray, yeah, Muzzy, um, couldn't remember his rank, um, so.
The one, this isn't a deal breaker to me, but the one that wasn't like an absolute, was what happens if somebody smashes it while it's in our building? And it was, he thought it was, that they would take care of it?
Yeah.
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 Absolutely, so if it is damaged, it's, it sounds like it's gonna be state police's responsibility to either replace it for us through other funding.
It's still theirs, yeah.
Uh, in all reality, uh, if somebody broke it intentionally, and most likely it would be broken intentionally, because it's in the booking room, they would be charged with a criminal offense, and as part of that, uh, it would be.
Restitution.
Requested for restitution if there is a conviction.
Yeah, it was good, I, uh.
Appreciate feedback from Kathy Muzzy, that was pretty good.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a good public hearing, we got good feedback.
Yeah.
We, we got good answers.
Mm-hmm.
Back by email, um, I feel confident in saying yes now, instead of, uh, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, the answer's a little delty.
Yeah.
And just remind me, how much is the printer?
The printer is fourteen hundred and change, um, for a one-time fee on the printer itself.
And how will that be paid for?
That is, uh, gonna be out of our budget, we, I did have conversations with, uh, the superintendent, Dr. Jackie Coe, uh, our intention was to try to get the school to pitch in on this, and do a collaborative effort.
I mean, yes, they didn't, they didn't.
Unfortunately, um, she doesn't know if it would be a cost savings measure to them, based on the requirements of the state to, they need to pay the fees anyways, to get a background investigation done, I believe she said it was a hundred and fifty dollars per applicant that they need to. So there, there is gonna be a trial run, um, and our hope is, if we can show that it is beneficial to the SLU, then maybe we can have conversations about them picking up any recurring fees, if we are fortunate enough to have the AFIS machine communicate with our computer system.
Has the printer been bought yet?
I don't believe it has.
No.
No.
Is it in the budget to be bought for twenty-four?
Uh, I believe, uh, the chief said he would be able. Uh, the proposed budget for twenty twenty-four, I think he would get our police supplies, if I'm not mistaken, he has, it's somewhere in one of those. He has, it's somewhere in one of those lines that he believes he would be able to get it. And that's one of those, not end of the world if we don't get it right away.
Right.
Obviously it would be beneficial, uh, there is possibilities as well, if we are gonna do fingerprint services, some municipalities charge a ten-dollar fee, say, um, so you could look at
a little bit.
potentially charging that like we do for pistol firmers, and eventually get that money recouped that way.
Mm-hmm.
That would obviously be up to the sports discretion.
It take a couple years, but you get it back. Alright, any other type of motion? Cause I don't have the original document. I mean, I guess I have, I have that on the agenda from last week. But I thought that there was actually a, a form that laid it out that the chief had. I thought.
You want the emails that were attached?
Is it in the email?
This is my paperwork from last week, so this, this was the chief's. Oh, it's on it last week.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering.
And, and that's comparing to, for like the other thing, he said, hey, you know, that's the, it's kinda like, there's nothing that, we don't need to actually do anything to accept it.
Right, I guess, yeah, just give it the nod.
Yeah.
Well, we had a public hearing on it, so don't we have to technically say something?
Well, I think, I think. I think we thought it was being granted to the town at that time, when we made the public hearing idea. But in actuality, it came back and it was, it's still gonna be retained under state police, so it's not actually, but we had already scheduled it, so that's why we followed through with it. I think I'm correct in saying that.
Yes, exactly right.
Yeah, we thought it was gonna be an over five thousand dollar grant to us, but it actually, the, the, it stays retained by the state. It's just on loan for a better term.
It's just like our etoxylizer nine thousand that we currently have as well.
Residing in our building.
Right, so. I guess, I guess it can be a lot vaguer than I thought then.
Yeah, like, I, it's one of those, I don't really wanna put this board in the way, or set a precedent when we don't need to.
Yeah, I just think we give the nod, Ben.
But, yeah.
Just, yeah, that, that, the board, the board's consensus is that we approve to accept it. That sound, that sound legit?
Yeah.
Maybe individually, but I appreciate that we did go through the process.
Yeah, oh absolutely, yeah.
Full transparency, that's what we're about.
So, alright.
Alright, on behalf of the chief, he says, thank you very much for your considerations and your time looking into all of this.
You got it.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
One other thing, you can say no prosecutor thing.
You're doing your best impersonation.
You know it well, you know it real well, yeah. Yeah, just need to take a little hair off the top, Anthony.
Let me grow it now, I'm gonna see if I can do the comb over. Do you wanna have a conversation on that position, or no, completely up to you, just with the changes, I know you sent some emails.
Think I'd rather have it with the chief, being here, personally.
I do think we need to have it though, before we set the final warrant articles and things, so.
What's kinda time sensitive? Uh, because they're cutting over in January?
January first is the transition.
Okay.
To felonies first, coming back to district court.
Or could we at least hear what he has to say and then we won't, maybe not, maybe not necessarily have a discussion about it, but.
Yeah, we can hear him out, I'm gonna see, but, yeah, I just.
So the chief just wants it on your radar, RBC.
Yeah.
We used to have it in-house, attorney prosecutor, then we switched directions, had a police prosecutor again, and now it's currently me. So currently this year, we've had a hundred and seventy-eight felony charges, that doesn't mean we had a hundred and seventy-eight felony arrests, that just means felony charges. Obviously, those numbers are skewed at times, based on the individual that may have twenty felonies on one case. And on this one, take one individual off of that, and we're down to about ninety felony charges. So that, that number is skewed in that sense, misdemeanor charges so far this year, we have three hundred and ten, a hundred and ninety-one violation level offenses, and three hundred and fourteen traffic citations that were issued. The court has determined that they are getting rid of felonies first, so right now, if we have a felony arrest, it goes up to superior court. We send it up to them, they deal with everything, we go up for a grand jury, and then they process everything and do the whole shebang. That's coming back down to district court, there's positives to that, but also negatives to that. The court schedule is also changing, so currently, being the prosecutor, I'm generally in court, I have two court dates a month that are on Thursdays, then we have juvenile court on Friday, we don't have many juvenile charges that come down the pipeline, just based on how the juvenile justice system is, uh, set up currently. With the change of felonies first, courts looking, pre-trial conferences, so after you have an arraignment, you would have a pre-trial conference, or trial, excuse me, trial management conference, to try to work out any negotiated pleas prior to a trial date. So those are gonna be happening on Tuesdays, Wednesday is gonna be our traffic court day for speeding citations, non-inspection, all the basic motor vehicle violations that we write. Thursday is gonna be our arraignment days. We can be creative in a sense, but there's also timelines on when we need to schedule it out, DWI needs to have an arraignment within fourteen days, domestic violence arrests needs to be next available court date, uh, and all other arraignments need to be after thirty-five days of the initial arrest. So there is a possibility that the cost of overtime is gonna increase significantly, just based on how the court is gonna be scheduling meetings, uh, and so forth. I can say this year, we've spent a hundred, or we've used a hundred and twelve hours of overtime, which equates to around six thousand dollars in overtime, uh, for court. So that's kinda where we're at, we're looking.
Could you say you go two times a month, or two times a week?
Right, currently, we have generally two court dates a month for arraignments and pre-trial conferences and trial management conferences.
And now it's gonna be like three days a week? Could be.
It theoretically could be three, but also in that, those timelines, we're not gonna have a docket from eight AM till three PM. It's gonna be, all arraignments are on one day, it could be a two, three-hour block that we get everything done on the arraignments.
Like we'll take Ware for two hours, and take Goffstown for two hours, and take someone else?
So Ware, I believe, I believe how they have it set up, yes, so all arraignments will be on Thursdays. Unless there are special categories and all that, so that's gonna be Goffstown, Francis Town, New Boston, Ware, and all that for arraignments, and then after that, initial arraignment, then they're going to a Tuesday, and then I believe Thursday afternoons are gonna be the trial times. Tuesday and Thursday afternoons are if something needs to go to trial. We don't, we generally work out agreements prior to a trial, we, we do have trials here and there, but we can usually work out a, an offer that meets everybody's needs.
So I'm just looking at the budget, and it doesn't look like it went up, but eighteen hundred bucks for stuff that Emily's doing, so.
The, the prosecution line, we don't even have, so we're taking it out of the overtime.
You do have a prosecution line.
Yep, there's still.
The fees though, for the prosecution, that's all coming out of the overtime line, but obviously.
There's still ten thousand dollars on that prosecution line.
Yep.
So.
Three twenty-four.
Yep. So it still exists.
Okay.
And the default looks like it's ten thousand, three hundred and fifty, um, thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty.
And it's been ten thousand dollars spent out of that line.
And proposed is fifteen thousand, fifty dollars.
The approved, yeah, the approved budget was thirteen, too.
Yep.
So, it is being spent.
So that's where we're at.
Okay.
Any questions you may have, or are you guys good?
I think I'm good.
So, based on what you said, you've got overtime and you've got this prosecutorial line, three twenty-four or line item two fifty-five. So do you anticipate that those two things added together are enough, given the fact that felony first is going away?
We're gonna spend more money, there's no ifs, ands, or buts.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're.
Whether it's paying overtime to have me at court, or if we.
Praying for a prosecutor.
And the problem is, unless we have a prosecutor that does Goffstown District, like, I was thinking outside the box with the chief, and we can't subcontract a prosecutor that does, say, in Hillsborough District Court, cause every district court's doing the same thing, and you can't be at two places at once, so you need to find an attorney that's willing.
Dedicated just to that court.
Yes.
I'm, I'm sure that as it changes, they'll probably change to go with it and give, give it six months, you'll probably, there'll probably be somebody there.
Yeah, they're gonna feel some problems.
Oh, yeah, that's for sure.
So.
When, when haven't they? So, alright.
I guess my question is, do we have enough in the proposed budget for this particular activity?
I mean, I think that this, this was, this was calculated on, this was calculated halfway through December, so I would assume that it was known halfway through December this was coming down the pipe, and.
It depends on what course of action you guys are looking to take, if you're looking to bring in another attorney, you don't have the money in the, the budget for another attorney.
No.
If you're comfortable with us staying the same course, and, uh, just continuing what we're doing. You know, just need to realize that we're, we're just, I'm not gonna be able to be on the road as much, or do other functions, cause prosecutorial duties as well. But we can manage and.
So is that the recommendation, that you continue?
But there's, I mean, there's, there's still a hundred thousand dollars in that overtime.
Or is it just, let's try it for a little while and see what happens?
The chief, the chief is saying that, uh. We will monitor, I spoke with the chief yesterday. Yeah, yesterday, Tuesday, he was in, so I did speak with the chief yesterday, we are gonna come up with a way to monitor and see how this actually affects us, right now, we're just.
Predicting.
You know, predicting, foreshadowing out what, what may happen, but instead we get the raw data that says, okay, last year, we spent a hundred and twelve hours of overtime from June until December on court. What is it gonna be the first three months, and we can project out for the rest of the year, cause felony first is coming back, and we'll have a better understanding on how they're actually gonna schedule and how it truly affects us. Good?
I'm good.
Thank you all, have a good, uh, new year.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Appreciate all your time tonight.
Absolutely, thank you.
Alright, uh, let's knock a couple of these other ones off first. Accept donation for skateboard park repairs, value of three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, thirty-eight cents from the Eagle Scout. This is for that halfpipe that we approved, um, but obviously we have to accept the donation, so. How, how does Park talk about it, looked at it?
Yes, Naomi, can you confirm that he did the last item? Uh, can you confirm that Ben finished that last item on the skate park ramp?
Which was?
Uh, it was the footy, no, the, the handrail.
Yeah, yeah, we got.
Yeah, he extended the handrail versus the half, um, like the quarter round that we talked about.
As soon as I said it, I could remember the email and the pictures.
Yeah, so he had reached out to all of us, and, um, I think everybody, Primex has done the inspection as well. And so I asked him for a dollar amount, because you have to accept it, depending on which way, cause you're, you're accepting it all under RSA ninety-one, uh, thirty-one ninety-five E, talks about your five thousand dollar limit, so he gave me a dollar amount stating that he had raised thirty-two fifty, but he spent thirty-three sixty-one thirty-five. He does have one more donor to cover the difference, so the value of the donation is three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, thirty-eight cents, and it's complete.
Okay. So it is complete.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation of the new, uh, the new installment at the skate park with a value of three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents from Eagle Scout Ben Lanier.
Move the second, any other discussion? I guess my question is, Park, can it maintain it moving forward?
Mm-hmm, it's ours.
I mean, it's gonna be ours, so they'll, they'll have to maintain it and/or dispose of it when it expires, like the last one. Okay. Motion seconded, any other discussion, all those in favor?
Alright.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, who do you wanna go next? Might as well do the twenty twenty-four proposed budget review. Do we wanna start with the budget, or do we wanna go propose warrant articles, cause we've got both, and it's all kinda intertwined, I'll call it.
Yeah, I didn't know if you want, uh, to do the budget, and then we could fill in the draft warrant, and then if you have comments on your warrant articles, whether you want them or not, we can add them to the warrant, cause the warrant, if you flip it over, I haven't even created the wording for all the CIP.
For all the other ones, yeah, I get you.
Those are just ones that we were aware of?
Yes.
Um, but you have your standard CIP, you have your standard, um, CIPRE.
Yep.
And you still have till January ninth, anybody that's gonna petition anything.
Right, okay, alright, so we wanna do the budget?
I mean, cause it's the first, but I, at least I've seen it, these are, these are sitting here, so I, I'm not really prepared to talk about the.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, those are done today.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I don't think.
I did wanna talk about the warrant article, just in, from the standpoint of, um, last public comment we had, Richard Butt asked us if we were going to increase the veterans' tax credits.
Okay.
And if not, he wanted to forward a petition, so he asked us to let him know if we were going to do that or not, and since the cutoff is January ninth, I think we need to make that decision tonight. To be able to let him know.
He wants to increase it from five hundred to seven fifty.
Yeah, so he has time.
Which is the maximum allowed, right?
Right.
But he also, thank you, Janice asks, if we weren't gonna, he would gather twenty-five.
Right, so he'll need time to do that, not one day.
Right, that makes sense. Boards, I use?
I'm sorry?
I said boards consensus? Cause we went five hundred, five hundred last year, correct?
Yeah, but that was to line it up, the new law?
Yeah, there, there was some verbiage in there, changed it to the new law, yes, one of them, one of them was definitely to get it into in-line, and I think the other one was, we changed the amount, I think.
Cause it was, what, two fifty, I think?
Yeah, it was, a long time ago.
Yeah, the request is to modify the veterans' tax credit according to L.R.S.A. seventy-two twenty-seven A, seventy-two twenty-eight, seventy-two twenty-eight B, from its current tax credit of five hundred dollars per year to seven hundred and fifty dollars per year.
Which is the maximum from, right.
Do we know what kinda impact that would have?
We do not, I was trying to find.
Should be about half of the impact from last year.
On top of, on top of what the impact already was.
Right. I'm just reading a text message from Beth, sorry.
I think it's, um.
I can't remember the number. Cause you have some that are surviving.
It was actually.
Was it, I think it's on your MS one.
It was in it. Thought it was in the presentation. Could be wrong. You don't get wrong for. I thought it was. I thought it was.
So it appears that we do.
I thought it was in here.
I don't have to zap them out and keep doing the check, 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 the license sheet?
Yep.
Maybe on the backside of that.
So that's three hundred and thirty-seven that are granted, the, um, ninety-two twenty-eight and ninety-two twenty-eight D.
Is that, this the war service credits, is that what someone asked? Yeah, so, that's, that's, well, let's not go with twenty eighteen, that would be bad, I do have twenty twenty-three's here somewhere. Twenty twenty-two. Veterans credits for twenty twenty-three proposed warrant was two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars, or six, one, six, eight for the tax impact.
Hundred and sixty-eight?
Huh?
Hundred and sixty-eight of them?
It was, no, it was, it was, I don't know how many actually took the credit, but the actual raise from taxation for veterans' credits was two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars, with a tax impact of, um.
One, six, eight, five hundred?
One, six, eight.
So you take.
That's cause it was five, that's cause it was three thirty-seven times five hundred, so if it's going up, if we're going up, two fifty, then it's eighty-four, two fifty.
On top of.
On top, yeah.
Right.
Eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, that's what you, so, so it'd be looking at like three hundred thousand rather than.
Yeah.
Two sixteen. Two sixteen. What would be, um, tax impact beyond that? You figured it out rather quickly.
Seven cents.
From, oh, additional seven cents. Alright, so sixteen cents plus, seventeen plus seven. Looking at twenty, twenty-some odd cents.
Well, this will probably be unpopular, but uh, I would propose leaving it alone. Eighty, eighty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money to not have. We just, I mean, we just scrimped and cut through fifty.
Twenty-five hour items.
Um, and now to, to suddenly say, well, and we're gonna not take in eighty-four thousand more, um, is a big jump. Not saying that, uh, individuals shouldn't go and get that work together and, you know, town can decide to pass that, but uh, just sitting here. As one person, yeah, probably leave alone.
Start the other end of the table? Ideas, thoughts?
This is always a tough one.
Hmm, I know. I agree. I agree, um. When we were at two fifty, went to five hundred and, I don't know if the dust even settled on that yet. So. I guess I would be inclined for the, to see with the petition myself.
Somebody let, would you let him know?
I mean, we get the petition article, I mean, at that point, I think, even with the petition article, we can. Can we then put it on the, 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 I mean, I know it goes on the warrant, but can we craft the article at that point?
If they commit as a petition, they draft it on.
Yeah.
And then they have to make sure that the twenty-five. Then they have to make sure that the twenty-five.
Residence.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so I think it's, I guess the consensus push, push petition? That sound right?
So I'll let him know?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it, yes.
Yeah, I'm glad you remembered.
Yeah. Alright, um, so I guess we'll go to the budget. Budget, I think I just found it here somewhere. I don't think I ever got.
I just had the one from, you weren't at this meeting.
Yeah, I can say, I, I didn't get the, the full. Do you have a copy of the full? Cause I didn't get that.
So how do you normally do this?
Um, usually you go down kinda line by line, if anything sticks out, um.
Is there a percentage that you wanna see as an increase?
Yeah, and that's the other thing too, is, is, you know, you flip to the last page and the percentage increase overall, um, you know, over the default is four point two-four. Um, it's four percent what we wanna see, is three percent what we wanna see, is three seven five. Um, kinda we start there, I'll say. Um, if the number that we wanted to be under was five, then we've succeeded, um, but I don't think we ever even thought, you know, um, of that number yet. And then obviously we kinda go down through the, the each department and, um, back and forth and kinda think and.
Yeah, so right now we're at five point six increase from twenty twenty-three approved versus twenty-four proposed.
Okay. Okay, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking at the four-two-four over the default.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were looking at. That's why I wanted to make sure you saw the right one.
Default is what was approved, added to the approved twenty-three.
Right, and, and I would, I would put more merit in the four-two-four because the, the, the five-six doesn't.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah, it doesn't account for all the.
Yep.
You know, all the raises that went through, the, the town, some of the town vote articles that went through, so. So I think that.
What is the cost of eleven, three? Well, it's been somewhere around seven. Cause I've heard it tossed out at finance was like three point something. Finance tossed that out at the school meeting the other night.
It's three point two?
Three point two. Sure, I just, somehow I, I serve some, yeah.
No, I, I'm sure, I'm sure that number was published.
I'm sure, I'm sure if anybody knows Frank kinda know, yeah.
I was reading the sign language.
Sign language.
Yeah, so, yeah, he read it, yeah. And, um, Naomi, what did you, did finance committee have anything to say about the?
They didn't talk about ours.
Okay.
They, because I said we had just been through everybody, so we were waiting, they're waiting to see if we're gonna whittle.
Okay.
So they have the same thing that you guys have and they have the same information, so.
Yes, I'm making my mind up by looking at the back number and it's. There's a ten or something, well, I guess I'll just go down through, see what jumps off on the page and.
Yeah.
What is one percent, do you have?
Hmm?
Just thinking, what is one percent?
Yeah, what is that worth, yeah? I mean, the first one, department really jumps out at me. We had some go down, some go up. Um, Selectman's Office went down twenty-seven thousand. Um, and the government buildings went up twenty-nine, but again, that is, um, in support of that, of the proposed twenty-five hour a week for the handyman.
And that is in here, that was one of my questions.
That's in the proposed.
Okay.
Um, and that would, you know, obviously that's, I, I say it's an in and out kinda, but, um, that's something that we proposed. I mean, we let the gentleman know, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, it is what it is, but, um.
Which is significantly gonna hurt.
Yeah, significantly gonna hurt by the sounds of it. Um, insurance, that's really out of our hands, the hundred fifteen thousand dollar increase, um, you know, lines two-twenty-seven, that vicinity. Um.
It's gonna get hard.
Yep, and the other thing that, that, you know, we, we can do also, um, we've done in the past, I'll say, is we've gone. We've gone back a couple of boxes, um, back to expenditure, the expenditure line of twenty twenty-three to the approved budget. And we've compared those numbers as well, to see if we can trim a little bit, um. You know, if, if, and we've, I mean, we've, we've had it where, you know, one line is way out of whack, you trim it down a little bit, um. But.
Yeah, so, I mean, you look at insurances.
Yeah.
Insurances are actually based cause and that's a hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollar increase.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's a substantial amount right there.
So if you get a fault, you're gonna find a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars somewhere.
Yeah, alone.
So the first, um, line item questions I had, other than the handyman in the town office area, was three eleven and three twelve, fire. The stipends, and the way I understood the conversation is those are actually going away, so why are they in the default budget?
Cause that was based on what was approved.
But if you're, if you've eliminated positions, those come out of the default.
You're eliminating stipends.
The stipends.
I don't know that you're eliminating position, are you?
Um, no, the positions could still be there.
Positions are still there.
Right.
They're just taking away the stipends.
I would think that they should come out, but I don't know what the.
I could s- see.
And then, uh.
Yeah, I could see what you mean with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, they're taking them out.
Um, if they get zeroed, those, those line items would theoretically go away.
You wouldn't get a chief, you wouldn't.
No, what I'm saying is, is, is actually those, those line items wouldn't even exist anymore, they'd be gone.
Yeah, well, they, they're, they're titled stipends, they're not, they're not the salaries, they're stipends.
Right.
And then, uh, three fifteen, the overtime, that's a heck of a lot of money for overtime and.
And, and what I remember seeing in, or hearing, I should say, um, was the reason that that was so hyperinflated for this year. Um, was the fact that, you know, they had sent three members off for training, they had to get the coverage, um. So, yeah, I, I guess I don't.
I mean, it's.
I don't quite understand why it's, it's that high.
If you look at twenty-three expenses versus twenty-one expense and twenty-two expense, it's more than doubled in two years.
Right.
It's, it's crazy.
And that's as of.
Twelve fourteen.
Almost two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Right. Was, yeah, cause that wasn't represented. So, I'm just looking at the twenty twenty-two expenses for the three thirteen line. Twenty twenty-two expenses versus twenty twenty-three approved, um, I think that the representation on the approved is the two more full-time that came on in the warrant.
Right, because you and I are.
That's why it's, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I understood three thirteen, I didn't understand three fifteen. And they talked about the fact that they're not using call force anymore. So on three eighteen, three nineteen, call force and part-time, they've only spent sixteen and eight, not rounded. Um, but they're asking for thirty-four and seventeen, but I understood they weren't even using that stuff anymore.
Um, no, that's, that's an accurate, that's, that's an accurate statement.
They just gained a couple more back.
Yeah, we got a couple back.
They did?
Yeah, and I'm still on the call force.
Okay.
And that's similar to the want to have Jason's unfilled position removed, which is not right, just because it's empty.
Right, um, and I know that, that we didn't have part-time employees over there for a while, um, but now we do again.
Yeah.
We're starting to, there, there, there's a couple.
And I have to admit, I know the least amount about the fire department, so that's why I have so many questions.
There's, there's a couple part-time employees and then there's, there's still, you know, floating half a dozen call members.
So three eighteen and nineteen look, look good to you as far as, they look reasonable?
I think the partying's are still there too, right?
It's hard to, it's hard to predict where the call force is gonna line up, I'll say. Um, you know, I mean, you get a couple of people that show up, or I say younger individuals that show up and they show up every call, I mean, that number could be eaten up real quick, um. That one's a harder one to predict, the, the call force wages. Uh, part-time per di, uh, part-time per diem, you're probably a little easier to predict. Um, I think that that's an accurate number, just because we, they didn't have those positions completely filled and now they're starting to utilize them again, so I think. You know, the, the, the call force wage could be a little bit high, maybe, but I wouldn't call it out of the park. And I definitely, I definitely would not call the EMT.
I was gonna say, the hope is to get more.
Yeah, and I definitely would not call the part-time out of, out of whack at all.
Okay, thank you. Three thirty-four A is a new line and I understood that was just for the chief's development.
Correct. That's the way it was.
Three twenty-four?
Uh, no, three thirty-four A.
Three thirty-four A.
Yeah, that's the way I understood it. Was for trainings and seminars for the chief.
Is that something he needs to have? Is it something we normally do?
It's a new line, it has not been done in the past. Um, I, the, the explanation was, you know, um, to try and keep up with, you know, changing events, et cetera. Um, changing, uh, procedures, standard practices. And it was brought up, I believe, by the finance committee that, you know, they even, um, that it was proposed as a new line and that. Acting chief work may not be the chief in position come next year, um, but, you know, the, the, the response back was, well, whoever chief you do put in there. Um, should be able to, you know, better themselves with a training line. That's really all I can say to that.
And three thirty-nine, it's five hundred dollars. I'm sorry, five thousand dollars for the cistern maintenance. That doesn't sound like enough.
Maybe they're gonna, gonna do a portion of them each year, you know, maybe they're gonna do a quarter of them, I don't know.
There's thirty-some odd, I believe, around town. Um, in different stages, um, some of them were put in in the, some were put in the eighties, nineties, I mean, it's all across the board. Um, some are steel pipes, some are plastic pipes, um. If kinda, I wanna say they've been neglected, but some of them have, um, you know, we paid to mow them, um. Some of the locks are missing, some of the, this, this, um, you know, manhole covers, they've got a, a seal strap that goes over them, um, with the lock. Cause we could be able to obviously access it. I think it's a large jump in one year. I mean, you look at twenty-one, there was no expense, you look at twenty-two, seventy-five dollars. And as of twenty-three, it was two hundred and eighty-two dollars, um, to go from five hundred to five grand, I think is a substantial jump.
But just the way they described the condition of, of what every cistern looked like and what they needed to do to them, it sounded like it was a lot more than five grand.
Um.
You'd have to ride around and look at them.
I, I think that.
I had the same notes that, you know, he presented it as very expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's state, state-approved, red paint to, to paint the, the, the pipes, um. Which I think is, I think it's a Benjamin Moore product. I mean, it's, it's, it's sourceable, it's not like it's something you gotta order online or something, um. I mean, it's.
Did at least make sure they hold water before they.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's one thing they do do. I mean, they're, the, 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 the members go out and test them every year.
I'd always wonder, you know.
Yep, they go out and test them every year.
A lot of them have been in since the eighties and I know, years ago, there was one that didn't have water.
Yep. Yeah, oh, yeah. Um, but you look at like one of them, and I think that, that I would, I would hope that in this money, we would also buy better material. The one down at Langtott's broke off. It, it's been broke off multiple times, I mean, I remember we had to go fishing for it a couple times in the last few years, I mean, but it's a, it's a plastic pipe. And the, the, uh, the, the current gets rolling through, they're pretty good, it breaks it off, I mean, see, there's already a connector on it, probably should be a steel pipe, right, just, just to hold up, so. I think it's a large jump myself, um, with kind of a, you know, kind of a wing, I'll say, but is it justified? Sure.
Did, did they say they're getting a program, gonna plan to put the program forth?
I haven't heard anything at all.
Cause I, I, I don't remember, and.
I guess.
Hopefully if they need it, they, they do use it, but with, with so much mutual aid and everybody coming to a fire, usually. When they're loading water, it's out of a natural water source, like Langtott something, so.
Yeah.
The number of cisterns we actually have, hopefully they would concentrate on them. Usually they're always at Perkinsville and Langtott, not ween.
Yeah, cause they don't wanna drain them, I mean, they're not refilling.
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, it's only in the event that we really use the ones, the, the actual cisterns.
So they could go about it at a, by control.
Priority, prioritize rate type thing.
Right, is what I mean, yeah.
Yeah. Well, he said.
You know, you go to the same three places and you get so many trucks that, you know, come help, they get loaded right up with water and.
I mean, I don't know if there's a, if there's a, a, a different test that's gonna happen with that, um, you know, again, you got some from the eighties, they got steel pipes that have been in the water since the eighties. I mean, are they rotted off? I, I couldn't tell you. Nobody's really been in the tanks to take a look either.
You know, anytime I ever paved a road, there was one, I always fixed the entrance and paved it for them because.
Made a nice apron on it, yeah.
I had to plow it and then they had a good spot to park, so.
Right. So, I mean, I I think I think that that up and coming, there's gonna be major repairs soon and later.
What, we think about cutting it in half and seeing if they use any of that next year?
So, I mean, are we like, are we totally finalizing this right now, or can we come up with?
I think you need a direction.
Like, but if, you know, if we leave with a question of, can you justify this?
Yeah, I think that's probable, we could probably do that.
Or, and 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 we could start with what you're saying, Benji, hey, here's what we're thinking, cut it in half.
And just spend it and go, yeah.
Justify, coming back, bringing it back up.
Yeah.
So to to bring yourself down to three point two, you need to whittle eighty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. That's a lot.
We're halfway through right now, we haven't whittled anything.
That's a lot. Haven't really whittled anything, yeah. Um.
So if your order is to go back and see what you can trim, I could carry that back, that's entirely up to you.
Oh, yeah, oh, to have the department heads do a little trimming on their own, if they could.
Well, i- i- you have to just recommend what you were thinking, this is, this is what the whole presentation was about.
Right.
So if you are looking to stick to three point two percent, then we have to go have everybody look at their numbers and see if if that's what you're thinking, but to go line by line
Well, maybe that's.
and take twenty-five hundred here, you're gonna be a long night to get to eighty-five thousand.
Well, maybe that's what we do, is we we ask them to trim.
I'm not, I'm not saying I wanna, you know, cut that specific line, I'm just asking.
I mean, do you wanna float that out there? I mean, it's entirely up to you guys, you guys' budget.
Yeah. Yeah, do I mean, is that something we want to float back to the department heads?
Well, I don't know, I guess I'm sold, it's gotta be down to three point.
I just threw that out there, cause that was.
Right, no, 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 appreciate it, I just, I guess I'm not hard set, that's what has to be, I just, hopefully when they construct them, they.
No.
I mean, I just tried to flip pages and there's some things we can't do.
Right.
Your insurance, you know, your transfer station fees, your, there's a lot of.
There's a lot of things you can't move on.
Just don't know that you can move, there are some new lines, there are some increases.
Line three fifty-three is the physicals and immunizations, they've been spending thirteen hundred, twenty-one hundred, thirteen hundred, budgeted fifteen hundred, and now they wanna go to seven thousand.
That's something that was approved by the board of fireworks to have physicals done yearly.
They did approve that.
Yeah. Yeah, that was for for, um, long-term monitoring, rather than just, cause I think I think the reflection of like the thirteen and the twenty-one hundred was pre-employment, well, this, the 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 plan is now more of a longer-term monitoring, chest X-rays for cancer, et cetera. And I know that the board of fireworks did approve that.
Okay.
I guess the notes I added, very thorough screening and NFBA recommended.
Yes, yeah.
Cause your insurance alone is a killer.
What's that, yeah, well, it adds a hundred and fifteen thousand on its own, right, insurance.
Yeah, and three sixty-one's the radio equipment, if we're going to take that out of the SIP, it should stay here, if we're not taking it out of the SIP, it should go here. CIP.
Yep, uh, the special revenue fund.
Yeah. So right now, it's in the CIP for next year.
So. Correct.
Not for twenty twenty-five, I believe.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And I know that that was, that was a life cycle management idea by the chief, um, to get a couple radios a year.
Right.
I guess what? My thought on that personally, as a user, um, as of now, there's only, I, I mean, the 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 chief and the assistant chief had had new radios to, I don't say try, but for the most part, you know, and everybody else had the same ones. So I could take your, I I could take yours and I knew exactly what buttons did what and, you know, what channel was where, et cetera. If we start in doing two at a time, you know, I grab yours and I go, oh, this is new, I don't even know how to operate this type thing. So I I don't know if, I I I personally, I would rather do it as one tall swoop, so if we're gonna change it, we're gonna change it for the entire department. Um, that's just my own feeling, but I guess that's just one board member, one end-user feeling, so, you know.
It's a lot to be said in knowing what the equipment does in an emergency.
Right.
Or how to use it.
Yep. And I mean, the the stuff that we have now in the trucks and majority of the portables is is approaching that twenty-year-old mark. You'll appreciate this, the programming software's XP. So, yeah, I knew you'd appreciate that, so, um, that's a while, so, um, but again, it's, um, you know, it's still functional, it's just it's no longer supported by the by the manufacturer.
When, I'm just catching up on my notes, so three sixty-one, I had I had talked about, can we spend ARPA money on bulk radios? And he had said, well, I really wanna do the two radios, but now with what you're saying.
I kinda had that as a general question, is there anything?
I mean, I don't wanna, I I don't wanna undermine what the the chief's idea is, it's just, again, as an end-user, I would rather have have a have a full change and say yes, you know, if I close my eyes, I can tell you how to get back to back to the A-bank, to channel one.
Yeah, I mean, like, I just, I see the ARPA money sitting there, and if we can spend it.
Well, quite a. Quite a bit of that is allocated for the police radios already.
Sure.
You know, and 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 I think that 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 number's gonna change, cause that was, the numbers we got were a couple of years ago, when we contracted in, but, you know, we do have the equipment, yes, but, I mean, site work's gone up and now we've gotta put a tower up that we weren't anticipating, I just, you know, that that project is not, I I'd rather see that project in the tail lights before we start committing large sums of money, just my thought. I mean, the the vent cleaning was twenty-five hundred bucks, or three grand, or whatever it was, over, that's small in the in the big picture, but if we're gonna commit a hundred thousand dollars, I'd hate to be short on the other end for that that radio project, you know, to to basically come, you know, three quarters away, seven eighths of the way and not hit the finish line, so, just my own thought.
Makes sense.
And hopefully that that project, I think, will price get wrapped up next year, so.
You have to commit to it in twenty-four and spend it by twenty-six.
Right, but but by this time next year, I think you'll have a better, you'll have a better idea what's in that fund, what's in that fund left, right.
So given all that, maybe, say, leave the radios on.
Yeah. But I I know that there was also, there was also discussion about the fact that if the fire truck article goes through, that the idea was to pull that radio, um, off of there. If I remember correctly, in the CIP process, in listening to the presentations, I believe that was part of the idea.
Yeah, I didn't re- I didn't remember it being contingent upon the fire truck itself, I remember it being, let's do it in the budget every year.
Right.
I don't, I don't think there's much beef in most of it.
No, I I don't, I agree, I don't think there is either.
Highway department on-call bonuses.
Do we think that we're actually gonna get five or six highway department guys in?
Well, I I think.
Think you got a budget for it.
Right, I think your hope is there.
Yeah. I think the hope is there, but on the flip side, I mean, I I it's a substantial increase, obviously, but I think that that, I think the mindset needs to shift on that to retainage more than, more than, for that particular line, retainage more than recruitment on that one, but I think it's it's obviously gonna be a full.
I forgot, what was the number per employee, I guess we'll do math.
Uh, I don't remember, not right now, knocked out my head.
Are you, are you talking about the snow pile one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was two fifty a week.
Yeah, two fifty a week for the for the duration, for what would figure out fifteen weeks, fourteen weeks.
Yeah, I was at sixteen, but.
Yeah, yeah, some in that neighborhood.
Okay, I thought that was, I thought that was that one time, that's gonna be every year.
It was, it, well, he's proposing it to go, right.
He's proposing it.
Yeah, and then there's also an increase on the transfer station on-call on line four sixty-eight to five thousand dollars.
Right. Right, and that was, that, we, I questioned that, and that was, basically, you said it was extended up to the top of the hill. Right?
It was, well, it was a, you know, a small amount, I guess that, you know, sets up the Jason's discussion. Certainly don't work the overtime that the guys down the road do.
No.
You'd asked him to check on the salt number two on line four fifty-two.
Yep.
He thought the number was high that he had in there.
Yeah, I think he changed it.
For tonnage.
I thought he went back and changed it.
Yeah, I don't know if he did or not, that's why I flagged it. I'm not saying he didn't, I just don't know.
Yeah, that's right.
That is correct, okay.
Yeah. It ain't going down, that's for sure.
What's that, salt?
Yeah, anything at this point, ain't going down.
Are we gonna use any?
Just my only question is, is why it. Was an increase from last year, cause last year was more expensive, that is the right number, seventy-six nine. It's supposed to go on the budget plan, as much as last year.
We did, no, we did last year is we cut it.
I did.
We we had him fill the shed out of year-end surplus, so we could reduce the salt, yeah.
Cut the tonnage, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it still went up forty, thirty thousand, I mean, it's, actually, it went up more than that, twenty-two expense.
And it's still went up per ton, right. So the difference is seventy-seven hundred, yeah.
Versus what we approved was substantial, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's very, very minute, just cut my IRS down, it all.
We've done that in the past when you were here.
Yep, yep.
Um, the whole thing under sewer, starting on line five oh seven, I think we had a generic conversation about that being more expensive to do in-house than it was to outsource, and I know that's not a guarantee it'll stay that way, but are we definitely continuing down?
When you hired him, you made that promise.
Yeah, we did, we did, yeah.
You made that promise that if he passed.
Definitely continuing down and being in-house.
Yeah, that was a, yeah. Next couple pages really not a whole lot.
No, no, down to the end.
Now, the the ambulance billing.
Yeah, it has to go, it has to, but it's on, it's on the revenue side, it's on nine thousand.
It's it's an In-N-Out, right? It's an In-N-Out, right, exactly, that's what I thought, yeah.
It's in the event that nobody pays you, if ambulance runs.
Right, you have to be able to pay the contract. Yeah, I guess we go.
No large numbers jump off, I guess, and so, yes, they don't offer, eat the set for, you know,
No.
Just for argument's sake, you can pick five dollars here and there when. I don't think anybody asking for anything.
Astronomical.
Some of them I don't know, I'm not familiar with, so just go by the recommendation, you know, unfamiliar with one department, you're familiar with another, but.
I think this is gonna be our, our big trimming.
Oh, yeah, I I think that's gonna be the trimming party, yeah.
That's exactly.
When you said you look at lines like, you know, such as the salt, it's that many dollars, an increase seven grand, it's not.
Yeah, it seems, it seems small in the big picture, right?
And I think what happens, as you all know, is i- if you leave it and it goes to the voters and you get default, and you see they gotta pick through and take out three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand.
You wanna see a big increase, I'm running on default this year first, and my next year is proposed, I'm running off like twenty-one salt numbers, yeah, boy.
I'm serious. I don't wanna, yeah, I wouldn't even wanna know. So. I I agree, this is gonna be, yeah. All right, so do we want, um, so I think that kind of the direction is is we'll take another look at it ourselves, see if anything jumps off the page. Um, on our, you know, on the off time, just to get it down through, ask the department heads to to look one more time, sharpen the pencil if they can. Um, you know, even if we get to a four percent, I'd be, I'd be happier. Um, nothing says we have to go to three-two, um, if we split the difference, you know, obviously, this is, this is, what what we have in front of us is, I'll say, unaltered with requests, um, so I, you know, being at four-two, four versus the the legislature at three-two, I don't think we're that far off personally, and maybe if we.
No, because I think you're gonna have to, I mean, if we end up with default, you're gonna ha- they're gonna have to trim anyway, because you have to pay your insurance.
Right, we have to pay the hundred and fifteen, right, so.
So if default is the answer,
Yeah.
then we're gonna be looking for that hundred and.
Fifteen thousand dollar increase.
Fifteen thousand dollars for everybody to chip into.
From day one.
Cause you have to pay your insurance.
From day one.
From, as soon as it gets, and we've done that, we've put our heads together as to how we can do it.
Yeah. Right.
It's just that, you know, default or propose, that's a huge cut if if default.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially with the current times.
Mm-hmm, oh, sure. So you want, you guys are gonna take another look, and you want just to have the department heads also take another look and see if there's any whittling at all?
Yeah. Yeah, I would go with that.
And then come back with that?
Mm-hmm.
On eight?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my my only feeling is I'd like to have the department heads here to 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 talk about it.
That would be ideal, you know, just talk some of that.
Well, I think I would, I would like to see that be a lot of part of your agenda anyway.
Right. Yeah.
Because I think, um, that sheet that's two-sided with the warrant articles would be on there, and if those, a good share of them, you'll have to still speak to those anyway.
I think that's the other one, yeah. Right, and and again, that's the thing, like, we have, we have things that we haven't talked about.
Yeah, and I haven't even put on, I'm waiting on the collective bargaining one, cause we came to an agreement last week, but I haven't.
Great.
That's not even on there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good news.
Okay. We all set with that for now? For the moment?
So do you wanna just take these and take a peek in, we had them two on your time for the eight?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Al. Uh, discuss department head evaluation draft.
Yeah, um, we briefly talked about it the last two meetings, um, two meetings ago, I developed a sheet and then, um, brought a draft in last meeting, and I sent it to everybody via email as well, so I'm looking for feedback on, is this kind of what you're looking for, and then specifically on the, um, items that are in there, in terms of what's being evaluated. And is it a good mix of quantitative versus qualitative?
Right.
So I did not receive any emails from anyone individually.
Anyone, okay.
I just had a few little things on the back for the individual, um.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Lists, um, inter-agency cooperation under police chief, I just threw sheriff on there. It's like the, or even if it just said county.
County probably be better.
Okay.
Um, I added sewer and water under DPW director.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, under town administrator, um, I didn't see anything related to, like, staff.
That's kind of in the, uh, general section, management of staff, that's under all.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
That's probably one.
Yeah, I'll just figure it out.
Yeah, we all see a chance to look at.
Yeah, the only thing I thought was, that, and I just, you know, you know, I didn't spend hours on it, but, um, I thought that maybe depending on the person you're interviewing, that maybe you should have, um, you know, a goal, some some goals there that they need to fulfill during the, within the year.
Almost like, almost like a a goal box, almost.
Yeah, I can, um, put that up at the top there, uh, I have key development needs, but goals would be gonna add it there.
That's the only thing I thought of.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only thing I really saw that stood out.
For all three.
Yep.
Okay.
So do you want me to send you over, who's putting in on letterhead, or what are you doing?
Um, I'll make those updates, and then I'll actually get the three forms, and then you can do that. Is that all right?
That works.
Okay, so you're all.
I guess just send, once you, once you get them for each individual, you know, send them again.
Yep. Okay. We'll do that.
And then how do we wanna actually do, like, how do we wanna fill them out?
Yeah, that was the next question, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's what I'm saying, is once we get them where they're they're individualized, we can probably play a little bit more as far as a comment box, the goal box, the, and see where we're, see how to actually go about them.
The only thought I had, um, I'm not really married to it, is. The only thought I had, um, I'm not really married to it, is if we split and, like, had two people, like, do the first draft of filling out, we've got three people, somebody would overlap. I had like two people fill out the first draft with the chief, police chief, to DPW, to town administrator, they come together as a board, like, okay, this is what the groups came up with. I think that would help us move forward at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, if we come in, if we come forward with just blank pieces of paper, we're gonna get, we're, we're gonna get nowhere.
Yeah, five of us are gonna spend five hours.
We're gonna get nowhere.
Yeah.
As proven by tonight, I mean, you know, so, I, I'm not opposed to that, and then, and then if the, if the, you know, come forward with, with kind of pre-fill, and then, you know, if the, if there's a strong opinion, hey, we gotta insert this from another member.
Yep.
It is what it is.
Yeah, well, if they have that strong opinion, they can also send that over and, and to, 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 yeah.
Yeah, 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 to the, to the two, yeah.
Can get it incorporated as they do the draft.
Yeah. Yeah, that might work.
Okay, so, um, with the eighth being a long meeting to get the budget and everything finalized, can we kind of finalize this on the, the following meeting, and that way we can then hopefully get these delivered in early February?
I think so. I think so, I think that'd be okay.
No?
Uh, no, I just, it, the screen went blank.
Oh, great.
So then I pulled it back up, and the screen now is black where it's been circling the drain all day.
Oh, boy.
But it says we've spent two hours and fifty minutes live with a black screen, that's why I was like, what the heck is wrong?
It's not wrong.
Well, I'm just saying it went black, and I just clicked it back on, and it's black, but it's still kept us going.
Oh, there, there you go.
Should be alright.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, I don't...
No.
Don't disturb, yeah, okay, so I think we're, I think we've kind of come to the point with that one.
Okay, um, do we wanna assign the two people for each department?
Um, I think maybe we might be a little premature on that, just until we get the final drafts of the...
Okay.
Uh, for each employee, my own thought. I don't know.
I think we could go ahead and do it.
Okay.
And then that allows those two people, because we're talking January fifteenth, that we could...
January fifteenth is your public hearing for your budget and warrant articles.
That's gonna be a busy night.
Yeah, that's usually what you do the whole night, because you have a lot of people.
Yeah.
And that's when they can ask questions about your warrant articles, because you have to have it finalized the next week, posted and signed, uh, two weeks, I'm sorry, twenty-nine.
That turns into January twenty-second. I just, yeah, I don't think it's a whole lot of harm in saying, you know, figure it out amongst the two of you between now and January twenty-second, if that's the date.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Okay, volunteer.
Chris Law, and to Ricky.
Wow, you know, you're alright.
He's your buddy.
Yeah. I mean, I would, I would think that, that some of the, the verbiage and stuff would probably be good for Ben to be on with the DPW director team.
Okay, with that?
Yep.
Um, again, I, I spend as chair a lot of conversation back and forth with Naomi, so it probably wouldn't be hurt to have me on that one.
Makes sense.
Um, I would almost think that because of the CBA process, you've probably got more contact with the police chief than any of us.
That also makes sense.
Just a thought.
Um, and then I would make sure, like, I don't think that Janice and I should end up all the same, like, Ben, so Benji and I, so I guess, I'm trying to make this fall out. Because we're the three newest.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
I would put Janice with Ricky, and then Sherry.
Yep, I'd like, I would like, yeah, I'd like that, yeah.
And then somebody double up, I guess, I would propose one of you two double up on DPW director. And go out and bang.
Sounds like a plan to make.
So... You're, you're a double?
Yeah, I'm a double, so it's me and Ben for the DPW director.
And then Salem and Sherry for police?
Yep, and me and Janice for you.
Okay. So, um, before you do the manifest, I have that one last lingering, um, thing that we didn't have enough people for Duck Pond, and Benji went to the, um, planning board meeting for the wetlands thing.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, for the wet, yeah.
And then the last time, we just didn't do it.
Well, we didn't have enough, we didn't have a quorum with them.
Right, well, true, I just didn't wanna get lost, because it's been almost a month. So Benji, remember, um, the, we, the planning board talked about the Duck Pond wetlands permit, and at that point, they discussed it and recommended to the board, and then you were gonna carry it back, and then you had a meeting.
Great.
So Benji was there that night.
Alright, so, so the, the planning board's approved this?
Yeah.
Appears there is...
He's got several sticky notes that need to be signed.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, it's all on the same page.
Okay.
Um...
But there's only one signature.
One signature line, yeah. Um, it says, "To the best of the signers' knowledge and belief, all required notifications to be provided, information submitted on or with the application is true, complete, and not misleading to the best of the signer's knowledge and belief. Signer understands that the submission of false, incomplete, misleading information constitutes ground for New Hampshire DES to deny the application, revoke any approval granted based on information, and the signer is certified, if the signer is a certified wetland specialist, licensed surveyor, professional engineer, licensed practice estate in Hampshire, refer to the matter of RSA, etc." Um, yeah, and then a signature line for one.
And I recuse myself from it whenever we talk about here, I would do the sign.
Yep. Yep.
So if it's just one signature, we need to have motion that you sign it?
I believe so.
That'd be appropriate.
That would be appropriate. That's all I see is one signature page for, for the town.
Yes, I don't know what all the stick, are there initials?
There's other, um, there's other, there's other signature lines, but it's, um, it's from the, the New Boston Agri.
Yeah, well, the sticky notes are just initials, though.
I think the sticky say initial.
Oh, yeah, initials, yeah, they're there, yeah, okay. Okay, so, I guess I obtain a motion for the chair to sign.
Yeah. See the title of it? I make a motion for the chair to sign on the behalf of the town of where the standard dredge and fill wetlands permit application for the Duck Pond Estates, the applicant's name is New Boston Agri Corp. And this has been recommended for signature by the planning board.
Is there a second?
Three.
Move and second it, all those in favor?
Yes.
Extensions? Yes.
Is it three, three oh two?
Three oh two.
Three oh one, or three oh two?
I'm abstaining because I'm signing.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, she, it's actually three oh one, because he, he recused himself.
Three oh one, that's only four.
Right.
Right, he, he's out.
Oh, he recused, thank you, yes.
And then I'd like some guidance on the, um, right-to-know request for, from the attorney's office.
I started, I spent six hours on it today. Like, Merry Christmas, I guess.
Huh.
Uh, and I think I'm done. Um...
Thank you.
But at least being able to come up with, uh, a time estimate, I think is important. Um, there ended up being, it's all, it's all, I made, I, for my own benefit, I made a little spreadsheet, it was like kind of checking boxes. So there are ten individual things with eight categories, so you end up with eighty, eighty possible things you have to, like, submit information for. Um, a big one, a big question I had, only one of them is time boxed, and so I would ask, can, can we ask, like, hey, are these actually all twelve months? Um, for instance... You know, it, it said, it said, all town bidding, I'm just picking one at random, all town bidding policies, and then at the end, it said, hey, for all of these things that we listed, complaints, correspondence, memorandum, yada, yada, yada. So because it's not time boxed, it says all town bidding poli- all complaints about town bidding policies, ever.
From when to when?
Right.
Right, when's the, when's the timeline?
Yeah, the only one, there's only one area that lists twelve months.
Yeah, there's one that was time boxed, and that was, yeah, ethics complaints.
Right.
But is it, but then it says complaints about complaints, I guess, I don't know. Um... And, and so the time I had to put in, I got to the time box question because, like, I'm only looking at nine months for me. It's a lot more for...
Yeah.
To you especially. Um, and it's every other committee, every other board.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, commission.
It goes deep.
Yeah.
Very deep.
So it's huge, and it's gonna take a lot to get the info, it's gonna take a lot to compile it, um, so I guess, oh, that was my other question, was, do they have a priority? Do they, are they, because this list is kind of all over the place, um, we can...
I can reach out and ask for a priority list.
Yeah.
The only reason I, I have not gotten a response back from the email that said, you know, due to the schedule and the holiday...
Mm-hmm.
I will let you know what our timeframe looks like after tonight's meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Because we aren't gonna make it to January first, but I just, I don't know, I didn't get a response back for, thank you for your email, so I don't know if he's out or not, but I can attempt to ask for a priority list, and I think...
Yeah. Yeah.
Probably the, the larger question is the timeline.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
I mean, I think that's the biggest, the biggest elephant in the room is, I mean, if it starts on, on July one of twenty-three, okay, perfect, we, we know, we know where we, where the line is going to start and move forward. There was obviously a timestamp on one of them. Um, but, but if the rest of them is, you know, from nineteen hundred, then, well, that's gonna be a long time.
Forever.
So if I ask for a priority list and a timeline to start conversation?
Yeah, I, I would say, what, yeah, is, is there, is there, is there a time bracket that, you know?
Yeah, and I would further say, maybe we can assume a timeline, whether it's, if we start with three or six or twelve months, whatever.
Yeah.
And say, okay, send that out to everybody that needs to be notified, you know, we got this a couple of weeks ago.
Let's even just go six months to start, yeah.
Yeah, and just say, hey, everybody, we know that this is here.
Mm-hmm.
You have to start, start with six months, it may expand.
Yeah.
Just, because I don't wanna keep sitting on it and look like we're, because we're not, we're not, like, trying to withhold information, it's like, this is just, it's huge.
No, it's so broad, it's very broad.
It's overwhelming.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the prob- the other problem there too, I think, is that, you know, a lot of the emails that I get initially, I mean, everything I have, ninety percent of them probably came from Naomi. So initially, those were going into my personal email accounts, because we, I wasn't set up with a, where account, well, I, I've changed computers and stuff, though, I'm not gonna have any of that stuff.
It should be on your, it should be on the, the...
The cloud?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I've, I've, I've had the same email address for ten plus years, and, um, every, every time I move forward, it's, it's saved. It hasn't gone anywhere, unless you push the delete button, it hasn't gone anywhere. So... Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't save local, mo- most, most of the emails don't save local, yeah, so, um, but yeah, I, I, I think, I think the biggest thing is, is the timeline, right? If it's, if it's the first of the year to, to now, perfect, if it's five years, ten years, at least then we have a, a number where we can start saying, hey, this is where we gotta go. And I think that would, again, it's still, it's still a multifaceted...
Yeah, yeah, because it's easy to say, you know, the request is, oh, all town minute taking policies, that's easy, we've got a policy, but then it's all complaints, correspondence, memorandum, plans, videos, text messages, emails, and related documents about town minute taking policies.
Right.
Okay, there's not a lot of that.
No, I would think so.
But you gotta look for it.
Yeah, you'd have to look hard, yeah, I think we have...
And how far back do you look, is your point?
Right, and we have to get IP involved.
But that's what I think you need to narrow down the time.
I think the window needs to be narrowed down, right, because that's, that's...
If it's from two and fifty years ago, it's gonna be...
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a year to get it, you know, but if it's, if it's only the past eighteen months, sixteen months, throwing numbers at the wall, then, then it won't be as bad. At least we got somewhere to start and a, and a starting line. Because right now, I don't, we have a finish line, we don't have a starting line.
Yeah.
I think on it.
So that's why, and, but then, like I say, I don't wanna, I don't want it to look like we're stalling, but oh, now, but so, I think we should pick something, six months, whatever, whatever, twelve months, whatever, um, and we will, I would propose we start with that starting line, and if they say, oh, no, 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 we want it from...
From the beginning of time, yes.
Start with six months or twelve months? What does the board wanna do?
Six months.
I think six months. Well, they did call out for a year on ethics, right? So maybe we, maybe we...
I was thinking twelve would be consistent, because I don't know that.
Maybe we use that, as, as consistent, we use as a twelve-months, use, go twelve months.
And then, like, some of the responses, um, I would assume that it's only the ethics committee that can answer that question, well, when do they meet?
They just barely got elected, too.
Right.
In, in my...
And, and were there, yeah, so were there any between twelve mon- whatever, early December twenty-twenty-two, and when they started accepting, uh, employees? It, it puts a ton on you.
Oh, metric ton, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Some of it, like, I, I mean, I'm repeating myself now, some of it's easy, of, oh, we know...
Yeah, the little this and little hanging for...
Minute taking policies, whatever. It's, yeah, it's then everything else about it.
And maybe that's not the way it was supposed to be broadcasted, maybe it was, you know, maybe, but maybe not, you know?
Like, I would rather, I would rather get on the same page with whoever this is.
Oh, yeah.
And say, like, what can we actually give you that's gonna be helpful to whatever you're doing?
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah, because that could, that could reduce the load substantially.
To both sides.
A hundred percent, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it would, you know, not create frustration, giving them something they didn't want.
Right, yeah, 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 you give them four hundred pages of something they don't want, then where are we getting, you know?
Then it, then it looks like we're trying to obfuscate it.
Right, and, and, and the additional load that wasn't needed...
Yep.
That we were, you know, that we put on, so, yeah, I would agree. Alright, um...
So, so...
I think it's a year.
So it's, so everybody will look for a year, and how, what's the timeline, we're gonna get back and say, hey, this is what we're doing, unless you say otherwise, uh, and we will have it by this date.
I think we do it right away.
Well, I just wonder if we, we start it right away, and we send it out, and then see where we are, because I'd like to include you all, is, to set, January eighth is see where we are...
Mm-hmm.
As far as clicking away, and we can keep him informed.
Yeah.
You know, the attorney's office informed about it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I don't mind making a call to make sure he got my email, because he could be printed wrong, and I didn't get it back.
Yeah, I would, I would say probably I wouldn't hurt to drop, drop a phone call to him, yeah.
Make a phone call.
And maybe even that would help clear up something and say, hey, you know, what, where, the board said we're gonna do a year, is that the timeline that you want? And just clear up some of those questions that we have, if you've got them on the horn.
Yeah, and we're saying that because absence of knowing exactly time.
Right, we're not trying to, we're not trying to skate out anything, we just, it's not there, so...
Yeah, and, and it could very well be because of, um, you know, I know a lot of people are vacationing this time of year, so I don't know, maybe, I didn't get a response back at them out of the office, and I'm gonna go back, but I don't know.
And it might not hurt to propose, you know, what, what Salem's saying here is, is every, every particular question has six aspects to it, is that also what you're looking for?
Okay.
Because they may come back and say, no, it's not what we're looking for, we're looking for this, and it changes the dynamic on it.
But I can also let him know that we're all gathering, and we're gonna kind of see what we have on the eighth, and I can share with what I got.
Yeah, 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 the wheels are in motion, but we just wanna make sure we're clarifying, yeah. Yeah, don't say.
Mm-hmm.
Eh!
Okay. And is the...
And, and that, so will you also notify all the boards, committees, commissions?
Mm-hmm. Is it, I guess it came across, is it safe to just show them what we're looking for with that letter?
I think so.
I think so.
And just say, we received this letter, I'm asking you to go twelve months.
Mm-hmm.
And gather whatever...
Information.
Information pertains to these questions, and if I can get something more concrete and narrowed down, I would share that with them as well, but get them started.
Right.
Right, all I have left is manifest, I think.
Hmm.
I said, all we have left is manifest, I believe.
Yeah, uh, can, um, the YouTube video, the ninety-one A training, the right-to-know training on YouTube?
I know, I'm, yeah.
Since we're talking about.
Yep.
Like, because if you're, if you, if you can get that, and then send the email out, and say, oh, and by the way, here's this training video.
Hmm, yeah, we just went through.
Yeah, so I just want, I tried to learn how to put the MPEG to the overlap, and then I say it has to cook, is what I call it, because the two have to be put together, and then you can put it up on YouTube. I don't have time to run back and forth, so I do have the videos, it's not gonna have the nice border on the bottom, but I could still put them up.
Yeah.
Um, I could just, a- and I just don't have time to set it up, run out for two hours, come back and put it back up. I wrote down every step, but I just, it's a lot of process to overlay every banner.
Yeah.
It's just not...
I think it...
So I have those to put up as well as the ninety-one A?
I just, I just, I would just title it, you know, on...
On the bottom, I was going to...
Right, ninety-one A training or whatever, and move forward with it.
Yeah.
So...
Sometime soon, it'd be nice to...
Put the minutes up, too?
Well, no.
You're on my list, no.
The, um, um, sorry, my brain is, uh...
Shutting down.
Not working, now, the, uh, building permits, definitely, we've been talking about a couple of meetings back that we've got some information about.
Yeah, right, and I forwarded to Laura, because it asked it for town council's input.
Yeah.
I'm waiting to get that back, I'm like, yeah, just because we've had people ask when we're gonna talk about it again, and I said, well, our next meeting will be the eighth, because I was asked by both NHMA, so you should check with council.
Mm-hmm.
So, she was out for a holiday.
Okay.
Wait for Cherry comes back.
I'm glad I made all those copies, I thought we were gonna have a ton of people.
Yeah, well, we need some.
No, for year end.
Oh.
I didn't know, I thought you'd have finance and everybody else there, but...
Not.
Can't win.
Yeah, and you know, if you didn't print any, you'll have to be a full house.
I figured if I had four, I'd need twenty-five.
Be a full house, guaranteed, yeah.
Wouldn't have worked.
No.
To answer your question, Beth texted me, and you accepted that money, and so you can draft a warrant article, add one more to your warrant article list to take that and put it into the fund.
Oh, okay, so we just draft a warrant.
She was a little, she was a little bit behind us.
Yeah, that's fine.
So she got me, and that's why I was like...
Yeah, so we just draft a warrant article, okay, that makes sense.
It, it's gonna be added to the other ones.
And I think that would be a no-brainer.
Move the money to the...
It's, yeah, you have to put the warrant, it's in the undesignedated, designated, and then it'll have to go into the capital reserve with a branch.
Right, makes sense. All right, why am I missing that page all of a sudden? Oh, there it is. Okay, all right, brings us to the manifest. In the past, uh, couple of weeks, I have, I would not, um, read the manifest, and I would not, um, vote in favor of it, because of the, um, at the point in time, it was the, I believe, the fire chief, um, rate of pay was, was, uh, an illegal motion at the time, that was rectified. Today, um, in good faith, I cannot vote or read the manifest, um, because the fire chief submitted for, the acting fire chief submitted for forty-eight hours of overtime last week, and I don't believe that that's, um, I think it's, it's poor time management, personally, um, so, um, I mean, the, the gross was three times the amount of any other employee, so, um, I just don't think that that's the best time management, personally. I know we can't hold payroll, but I cannot in good conscience read the manifest and vote in favor of it, so, I will hand it to my right, do I share my nap?
I will, uh, well, I'm going to read it, and we have to make a motion and a vote, because we gotta pay everybody, but I do agree that, you know, maybe we can have a discussion with him, because that's, I don't even think three times, I think it was more than that, it was, it's not so much the dollar amount, but eighty-eight. I worked eighty-eight hours once or twice in my life, truthfully, and that's, that's too many, must be, to split them hours up a little better. And I understand some people aren't getting the hours as many as they'd like, so maybe they can, like you said, better time management.
I mean, it rolls back to about fourteen, fifteen-hour days, set on a seven-day week, so...
And one day was taken off, so it was done in six days. Anyway, I'll make a motion, order the treasurer to sign the payroll and accounts payable checks dated summer twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, is included in the following manifest. Payroll manifest, ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred, twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents, it's weekly, monthly, quarterly, yearly payroll. Accounts payable manifest, one hundred and six thousand, nine hundred, sixty-six dollars and forty-four cents. John Stark, accounts payable manifest, two hundred and fifty thousand. Where school accounts payable manifest, three hundred thousand, for a total of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-four cents. There's no selectmen, you can schedule Monday, January first, twenty-twenty-four. Like, order the treasurer to sign payroll checks dated January fourth, twenty-twenty-four, estimated to be about eighty thousand. Furthermore, order the treasurer to sign up to the amount of ninety thousand for account payables, and cannot wait until the next scheduled meeting. Reports, actual check amounts will be reported to the board of selectmen by inclusion of the manifest memo at the next scheduled meeting.
There a second?
A second.
I will second, so that we can have some discussion.
Discussion. Discussion.
Uh, yeah, I guess I said it before, you know, Ricky explained the situation, we kind of had something rocky a month or so ago, it seemed like we were sort of...
That was rectified, that was rectified.
And at the time, you talked about that, and, at the time, I said the similar thing, uh, transition from the Board of Fire Ward's to the Board of Selectmen has been, uh...
Kind of non-existent.
Non-existent's a good word, um, still feels that way. And I'd made the remark before, as far as I know, you know, we're legally obligated to sign it, maybe at least obliged to, um, so I signed it before, I think I will continue to do so, but it is still, uh, I don't know, under protest.
You have a discussion?
Yeah, um, I definitely think that, uh, we need a better transition plan, or a plan, because it doesn't appear that we have one with the Board of Fire Ward, so I don't know what we need to do as a body here to, to get that, that in place, so I'll think about that. What do we need to do? And second is, I think we should have another conversation with the Board of Fire Ward's and tell them, you know, this is not acceptable. They believe it is acceptable, then we need to understand it.
Always thought that that was the, having two different boards or committees oversee one entity's always been tricky, now, when it falls completely in our lap, I think then we can discuss it better, and till then, I expect some rough water, I kind of did all along.
I, I completely agree, I think it's gonna be very rough, um, you know?
There's two different ways of doing things, not saying anybody's, one's right or more wrong than the other, just always, there's too many cheats, there's problems, so...
Mm-hmm. Well, if I'm not mistaken, they tell us, they, by sending it over, they said that it's okay, I mean, right?
Uh, we don't, we don't see their payables, we only see the payroll.
Right, but by sending it over, they're saying this is what, what, this is what you want to do.
I don't think, I don't believe that they see, they don't see payroll, they only do payables, they do not do payroll.
They only do their payables.
We're not, we're not seeing payroll until it gets here.
Till it gets here, right, and I mean, the records are attached.
Yeah, I just, my opinion on it is, like, I, we'll have to sign it, but, or, but I think that anyone that's working that many hours is not gonna be effective. And unless it's an emergency, I don't think there's any reason for it.
We've heard from everybody.
Do you have a first, a second discussion? I'll take a roll call, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Posed?
Aye.
For one.
Yeah, anything else pressing?
Good night. Had one of these last night.
No? All right, and, and I, I think I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Your second.
Whoa, that was quick. Move and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Uh, this was for the police.
Happy New Year. Yeah.
We need to get that back to them.
Probably wouldn't hurt to put it in the mailbox.